Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 18th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency and now join me as we lift the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Associates Golf Car. For those in the audience who are watching us at home, the applicants are seeking approval for a new business coming into town where part of the business has been, if that's the right way to say it, they've been using the site for storage, but it's not going to have a new office complex as well as be a location where quite a lot of golf cars are stored in the back. Along the way, before the public hearing has been opened, the board's been working with the applicant back and forth to come up with a building that we think will complement Hyde Park as well as some screening improvements so that you won't be -- I can safely say that for many people who've driven past that site for a number of years, they've never noticed the golf carts that were there in the first place. But we're adding some additional screenings so that even during leaf-off, it won't be obvious. Let me turn it over to you guys. Mr. Day? Oh, Megan mushing up a public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Mark Day, day engineering, representing Associates Golf Car Service.
Mr. Day, I just be -- you need to hold that like right up close to your mouth.
Okay.
There's something about the acoustics in here anymore that I can't hear.
The property is located on the east side of 9G. It's a 12.6 acre parcel. It's in the neighborhood business district. The parcel, for the most part, there's an existing single-family home on it that as part of this proposal will be razed. We are proposing in that location, a 4,800 square foot, single-story building that will act as the office for the business as well as golf cart maintenance in the rear. We are also going to enhance the existing entrance. We are in front of, or will be in front of, the DOT shortly. We have met them on site. They agreed to the location of the proposed entrance and to the improvements that were being made. We've also are proposing landscaping on the south side of the building in the area, the lawn area on the south side between us and our adjacent neighbor. The property to the north is also owned by the same applicant and it will remain so. Our development is limited to the front of the property. We have done a lot of cleanup work in the rear of the property. There's a corral back there where the golf carts are stored. That will remain. We are adding a fuel storage area, both a diesel and a gasoline tank of 500 gallons each. They'll both be on concrete pads with bollards. The tanks are double-walled tanks with interstitial alarms, so if there's any leak detection, it'll be picked up before there's any actual leak. We've also proposed lighting in the area and that's pretty much the application. The building is a pre-engineered structure. We are proposing 22-foot eve height. This would be the front that faces Route 9G. We are going with a slate gray roof. We're using a crimson-red primary panel. Also, we're using some gable at the front and sides of the building. They'll both have the slate gray roof as well. And we're going with a black trim and we're using a cultured stone along the front and along the sides of the building. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Day. In the interim, we received a reply from Deches County Water and Wastewater Authority. I know you've had a copy of that, so you'll need to respond to that. I want to thank your office also for doing the research with DEC. There was some question since we last saw the applicants about whether the fueling area needed to be covered. It does not. It doesn't reach the threshold. In addition, it's already on concrete pads, so if there is any kind of spillage, there's a way to, once the liquid evaporates, you can clean up the concrete itself. And I think we still need to discuss the easement to the adjacent parcel at some point, but we'll get that down the line. Let me start with our consultants. Ms. Axelson, comments?
We had a review memo, March 20th. I know that the issue with the fuel tanks having shelter has been resolved by that email. You know, basically, one of our comments had to do with the land bank parking and the planning board being sort of at peace with the number of proposed spaces. Most of the other planned comments are, you know, pretty technical except for the shared driveway issue. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Zataro?
No, again, our comments are relatively minor and I think they, you know, they'd have to go ahead and work with the agencies in terms of the Health Department and the DOT and the Water and Wastewater Authority. But as far as our end goes, there's just some minor comments left.
We did a site visit that you were present on. Do you want to summarize that in any way for the board, the full board?
Well, we took a look at, you know, the drainage in the area, how it enters the pond, how it leaves the pond. You know, this project isn't really going to have any impact on that. The roof leaders for the building are going to be piped to a, like a small onsite infiltration area. The one thing that we did note there was, I guess there's a wood cutting, you know, business or some kind of a business there. So, you know, if there is and if it's going to like remain there, we just want to make sure that that's noted on the plan so that when we go out to look and issue a CO for this building that, you know, there's not going to be any like questions. So who's ever doing, you know, the whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, that's my brother.
And by the way, I want to just --
And it's fine. It's fine.
Yeah, we want to quote Tad real quickly. It doesn't matter. She doesn't care. Just show it if it's a use that she wanted to talk about.
Yeah, just show it. I mean, it's not like there's any, it's not like there's any
No, it's going to be gone.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Glad I brought it up.
It's sore subject.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you.
No.
Ms. Paul Doro, any comments?
We did hear back from all of the involved agencies, so the board can consider making a secret determination tonight. The applicant still needs to obtain a variance before the board can consider approval. They are on his own board agenda for next week. And you mentioned the driveway. You mentioned the driveway and yes, we are still looking for them to do a common driveway easement for the shared driveway for the other property. It could be a condition of approval.
Question, how do we, is that something the town would review because it would be between themselves?
We just want to make sure that it provides the lot with the right of access. I don't care how maintenance is allocated between the part, between each owner.
So we submit that for your review?
Yes.
Okay.
So would you be able to shoot me an email so then I can consult with my attorney and just have him draw something up?
He probably has a standard, right, or something?
Yeah, I mean, we have ones we've approved in the town before that I can send you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So just so I have an idea what to give to him.
Okay.
Just for the audience and for everyone else, while the two parcels are owned by the same owner now, if one was to be sold in the future, particularly the small house, and there was no access to it, then we'd be effectively burdening that property site. And while one thinks that if you're buying a site that there's appropriate due diligence, we've discovered that's not always the case. Anytime, anywhere, things can be missed. So we're just trying to make sure that there are no future problems. And it's easier for you, Emery, when you want to sell it. They can get in unencumbered as well. Thank you. Let me start to my left. Ms. Weiser, any comments?
I have nothing to add. Looks great.
Mr. Murphy?
On our site visit, we saw a couple of storage trailers. What's the plans for the storage trailers?
Were they on the left side of the property?
Yeah, they were.
They're all being moved to the corral. We actually show them on a plan. They just technically move.
You do?
Okay. One of them didn't look like it would move too well.
Is that the ones on wheels?
I don't know whether it was on wheels, but it was, it looked like it was kind of dilapidated.
Yeah, we're not keeping that.
Yeah, that one's good.
That's good.
By the way, when we say this, you know, we just want to make sure that when Mrs. Moss goes out after everything's done to give you a CO, that there are no issues that raise problems there. And seeing since on the site plan is a red letter for her, so just make sure it's moved beforehand. But that's what I thought. Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
For our discussions, like very much what you've done with the colors, the whole units. So look forward to you getting the CO on it and moving it up.
Ms. Dexter?
I would just add that for those trailers, you know, it's not that we care if they're there or not. If you think that at some point you might need them, just put them on the plans. It's okay. We'd rather have you anticipate that they're going to be there at some point or that it will take longer to remove them, but just to show them on the plan. So we don't care one way or the other if they're there, just that they show up on the plan.
I think there's three there now. We do show two to remain. The one that I think you're pointing out, we
Use your microphone. This is being recorded. That's why I'm asking you to use the microphone. This is being recorded.
Yeah, there's actually three in there now. There was, there's two shown on the plan that were to remain. One's in pretty bad shape, so that's the one that we plan on moving. But I think the winner, just we weren't, they weren't able to get it out.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you for, you know, investing in your property here in Hyde Park and keeping your business here and looking forward to the new building going up. And thank you for accommodating our ideas with it.
Thank you.
And thank you. Ms. DiNapoli?
I don't remember the answer to this question from the last meeting.
No.
The answer's no. But when we had discussed about the overhang at the front and the back, the two feet, that was fine. And then we did a follow-up at another follow-up meeting because I guess I was under the impression that the overhang was going to be on the sides also.
Yeah, doing it all the way around.
Yeah. That was a real easy one.
So it's yes.
It got increased to 18 inches all the way around, if I remember.
That's from my notes or minutes. What I've recorded is to extend 18 inches on all sides and Mr. Day agreed.
It'll be a nice improvement to the area. Thanks.
Would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? There being none. Let's see. So are you before the ZBA for your first meeting? Is this a workshop? Are you workshopping this, Mr. Day, with the ZBA or have you already?
We actually were on for a public hearing.
Next Wednesday.
A week from tonight.
Good. Then we're prepared to take action tonight. And what I think we should do is adjourn the public hearing after we do the resolution to the first meeting in May. That will give the ZBA chance to give you, they can't, as you know, give you the variance until we conclude secret. We're doing that tonight, so they can take action freely at the next meeting and then we can probably close the public hearing afterward and consider approval. And I think it's a good sign that you don't see anybody coming out tonight. So who has this? Resolution? Thank you. Oh, first.
You want to do the EAF?
First, did everyone have a chance to read parts two and three of the EAF that were prepared by our consultant, Ms. Axelson?
Yes.
They were sent out by email. Then we will stipulate that they've already been read into the record so that we don't have to go through all that and make it a little bit quicker evening tonight.
Okay. Resolution adopting secret determination of non-significance Associates Golf Car Service, resolution number 2018-05A, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby determines that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Now we'll forward that over to the ZBA so they can take action at your request and make a motion to adjourn this to May 2nd.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see you back in May 2nd and we should have a approval resolution.
While done.
Thanks for working with us. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is also a new public hearing for the Locusts. The applicants were the first to make it through after the town board passed an ordinance that would permit rural events. There are various thresholds to hit, including minimum acreage size, et cetera. But in general, the nature of the law is to allow weddings, special events at locations that might not be considered at one point appropriate for them. But now with weddings in barns, et cetera, we're finding that these sites provide a way for the owners to have additional income beyond what their traditional uses were as well as bring more people into the community, which is always a happy thing. Before I let you start, Megan, a motion, open the public hearing.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Didio, take it away.
Andy Didio with Tekonic Engineering accompanied by Jennifer Ventile from Cuddy &amp; Federer LLP. Here on behalf of the Locusts on Hudson LLC for seeking site plan approval and special use permit for rural events venue. The project site is a 76-acre property consisting of three individual parcels on the west side of Old Post Road. It's, the property is bisected by CSX Railroad. Ultimately, the existing condition plan just shows the existing structures, the property setbacks, the existing entrances to the property, and I think that's pretty much it. The proposed plan, some of the changes that were made subsequent to the last meeting as requested by the board were existing uses of the existing structures as well as proposed uses. Those were added to the bulk table of existing structures. There's no, there are no additional permanent structures proposed.
Let me interject something real quickly because I think Ms. Ventile might do it before I get a chance. Some of the labeling does not show existing uses. It shows historic uses. There is no piggery, in other words, on the site now. But these are what these were traditionally referred to. I know it's a disappointment, Mr. Kaufman, that we don't have the piggery, but we do have the structure and the memory of it being used there. I just want to make sure that for the record, that's correct. Thank you.
Absolutely. The C102 is the proposed plan indicates areas where that will be utilized for temporary fabric structures, ultimately options for given client or bride as far as where those will be erected, in addition to temporary restroom placement and service vehicles where those will be parked. So an individual event will typically use one or a couple of those locations, but they'll vary depending on the event and the client. Two parking areas are proposed for grassed parking. That's a deviation from what we had previously, which was three parking areas. Subsequent to our last submission, we received feedback from Scenic Hudson and they have a no-build zone in the southeast corner of the property and they had requested that the parking area be removed from this, from the no-build zone. So we revised the plans to do so. In doing so, reduced the number of total parking spaces. However, we're still well over the required minimum. Drawing C103 just shows the conservation easement that Scenic Hudson holds. There's a no-build zone, basically everything from what's called Strawberry Fields Lane to the south on the east side of the CSX tracks and then a 365-foot buffer along the Hudson And drawing C501 just shows some details of the parking areas as far as spaces, signage out on Old Post Road and some fence details for around the swimming pool.
I guess the only thing I'd add to that is that the elimination of former grass parking area B still allows us sufficient number of spaces to do everything we talked to you at the last meeting about of rotating the use of the fields to assure that there won't be mud or difficult situations as well as still to maintain choice for the bride or client as to where they would like to see the parking for their event.
So before I go to the consultants, just a couple of items. In the, first, I want to thank you again for providing such really detailed responses as well as set of plans. I know the great care and forethought's gone into this application because even though you are the first out of the gate, I'm not sure we'll ever see this level of work again. It just depends, I suppose. But then again, you also have a really big site that's very suitable for this, at least in my opinion. In the environmental assessment forms information, there's a note that eagles, bald eagles are nesting nearby. Nothing that you're doing seems to upset that. However, it was brought up at the agenda meeting by zoning administrator Moss that occasionally, we don't know if you've been doing it, that someone might want fireworks. And in reading the analysis, Ms. Axelson forwarded to us some information from the DEC, since it's a protected species, they need to be a half a mile away. Also, I was asked by Ms. Moss to remind you that if you do want to do fireworks or the applicant of your bride slash client wants to do fireworks, that does require a separate permit from the town board. And it was her thought that if you were ever going to think about doing fireworks, you might want to show a staging location on here. I don't know if you want to do that or not, but that way we would know that it's a half a mile away. Basically, bald eagles nest in evergreens. They typically do it near a water source, so we're guessing that they're probably right along the river, which is within the Scenic Hudson easement. We just want to make sure that anything where you staged the fireworks is, again, a half a mile away. That's the only restriction I could find. Ms. Axelson may go on to that. Also, in your response, Ms. Ventile, you said that you agree that we should discuss whether onsite ambulances would be needed. As it turns out, Ms. Axelson did the research and it's actually only required when there's 5,000 guests or more. And if you've got that many ever there, that'd be a really big wedding.
We don't have enough parking for that.
I also want to thank you that in your response on page eight about comment eight, you indicate that you're amenable to the addition of a note to the plan set for the use of the dairy barn when it will be done in the future. That just makes it very clear and easy for us to be go through. And for the board, as you've had a chance to read through, based on, I guess, what I was, I admitted that I was discussing la dolce vita type parties last time, the applicants have refined their request to go beyond the hours that the law initially sets. Just make sure that, I'd like for us, and we discussed this, I want to have everybody weigh in as to whether or not you think that it's okay to have amplified music in the tent up until a certain time, but then the 4:00 AM would be in the building whenever it's allowed. In other words, these would be more contained areas now if they're going past the 1:00 AM. And beyond that, I'll wait till we hear from the rest of the board. Ms. Axelson, let me start with you.
We did get a lot of new information. It was very helpful. Addressed some comments, raised some other questions, so we'll have to work through those. I'm going to suggest signage on the pedestrian-only bridge on both sides so that that's clear. And we may need some more clarification about the agreement on the bridge. I'm assuming from the response letter that there is no agreement for the pedestrian bridge?
That's correct.
Okay, so let's see.
By the way, Ms. Axelson, do you mean a sign that would say permanently pedestrian only or do you mean just before events would be erected, like a small sign that would say pedestrian only or?
I mean, it might be easier for the applicant to just put something up that's permanent so they don't have to remember to do it for every event. You know, since the site is kind of being prepared to be an event thing and, you know, I'm guessing if it's about a dozen events per year or less and that's going to be between probably June and October, that they're going to come pretty quickly. So that would be my suggestion.
I assume that would be considered directional signage, not subject.
Yes, it does not.
Right. So you may need to do more of a signage planning.
It wouldn't be applicable for the road?
No.
No.
No permit required.
Just checking.
Because we're assuming people would come in, use the parking area and then be instructed to, however. Let's see. We still would like to have some documentation from a structural engineer, you know, somebody who can look at the bridge. It doesn't have to be conrail, just an engineer.
So I don't know if anyone had a chance to see it, but there was a late-breaking email on this from Mr. Lindberg from Tekonic. And in essence, he argued that it's difficult to get a structural engineer to do any kind of analysis of a bridge they don't own. And the argument was repeated that it's, in the agreement, it's clear that CSX has the responsibility to keep the bridge up. And then he referred to the fact that because it lists guests, emergency equipment, et cetera, that that would be the HS20, I believe it is, load would be adequate. As long as you're raising the issue, though, it's something that I've been, I read that agreement now three or four times. I can't forget what the trigger is that would cause CSX to improve the bridge. How would they would ever know that it's, that might have structural faults? The fifth paragraph, to me, I'm not an attorney, seems to indemnify each party from injury claims of the other if something happens, but I don't see how CSX ever comes in and takes a look at it in the first place. It seems as though, I mean, what I wrote in the email, it's like, it's for the record because it's copied with our planning secretary, but we don't, what we're trying to avoid is we don't want the bridge collapse to be the one that triggers the fact that now it has to be rebuilt. Obviously, no one wants that. And I've been on that bridge a zillion times. It doesn't, to a layman, it feels okay. I mean, I've been, no, but I mean, I've been in pretty, I've been in trucks, you name it. It's, I mean, it's still wobbly because it's a wooden bridge over an open space. But I think that's what Liz is alluding to and what we need to kind of clarify, whether the board's comfortable with just relying on the agreement or whether we think that there might need to be something else. Because it doesn't appear as though the bridge has been repaired in a long, 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 long time, just looking at it. I could be wrong.
Can I add something quick?
Yep, please do.
It's a coincidence, I think, but we just received, the town received a letter, I think it was last week, from the Hyde Park Fire and Water District where they had sent a letter to, if, I think we all know the bridge that goes down to Rogers Point. Well, they sent a letter saying that they will no longer provide fire service to Rogers Point and the three residences that are, you know, over there because in their opinion that the bridge is not safe and that they will not drive their fire truck over it. So.
Are you saying that we could therefore rely on the fact that we received a positive comment letter from the fire department this time?
Well, no, I'm not, no, no. I'm just saying that I don't think that CS, CSX has a good track record of inspecting their, you know, their bridges. And on that one, I went down there and I could see why the fire department, you know, would say that, especially now that they've got brand-new plywood tacked all over the deck. So, you know, like my point is that, you know, and you said that what like triggers, when are they going to repair it when, you know, it falls down? So, I mean, I know the applicant is in a tough, you know, position, so we're just going to have to work like through this. I mean, maybe if the fire department goes there and says, oh, yeah, you're like, we're fine with it. Maybe does that like absolve us? You know, I don't know. But.
Being someone who lives near that bridge that goes to Rogers Point and taking it several times, the last time I believe I was escorting Ms. Weiser and her husband to show them what it looked like down there, it's pretty rickety. I can tell the difference there. I hate going over it.
And they posted, and they posted, I don't know who posted signs, but they posted signs there that says pedestrian vehicles only. So I don't know how, you know, the boats are going to go in and out of there. So anyways, I am going to call this week. I'm going to call down. There's CSX Maintenance Yard down on Brewster.
Good luck.
Well, I dealt with them in the past years ago when we had another issue somewhere else and they were very helpful then. So we'll have to see what happens now. So I thought that if you guys don't mind, being I'm calling for the Rogers Point Bridge, if you want me to mention this particular one too, whether they have any maintenance records on it, I don't mind asking, but I don't want to, I don't want to bring up anything. It's, you know, your project and your property, so.
You can think on it before you ask.
We have absolutely no objection to your, to your making any inquiry. I think first of all.
I have to call them anyways for something else.
Yeah, fine. I don't have any objection to that. But I do have an objection to any inference that there's something wrong with our bridge just because there's something that another
No, 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 no. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying as far as their track record of, you know, reviewing these things.
And our point in the email, and I do apologize for the lateness of the email and I think, as you say, Pete, it's something that we just have to work through. But the point that we were making is that we can, we have established, and the engineer's email did establish, that there's no, our application for this rural events permit is not in any way, shape or form increasing the load demand on the bridge above and beyond what is already there.
I agree with that.
And again, I don't think we're here tonight to debate legal agreements, but I think it's very clear that the bridge is not owned by our landowner, but by CSX and they therefore have the obligation to maintain it. And we don't have the ability to, you know, enter upon the bridge and do anything in that regard. So we thought that a reasonable approach, an approach that says that we have to produce something from CSX, we can be visiting with you in 2022 probably and there will be no events in the meantime. So that seems to be a penalty that's very, very harsh. So we thought that a way to reasonably look at this would be to analyze it in terms of load. Certainly by approving this permit, you are not authorizing any increase in the load. In fact, I think your email, Pete, said probably anything that we bring in for a rural event is not as heavy as the oil delivery trucks that the house gets anyway.
Right, no.
So it's not So, so it's not as if the town would be incurring any liability for authorizing use of a bridge for an occupancy status that's higher than what they have.
Well, that's my concern. So as long as, if the attorneys say that the town is not liable, if we approve this rural event here and if, God forbid, something happened, that town's not, like, liable, then...
Just remember that they can agree, but that's only for a judge to determine. Anybody can say anything. I don't mean that rudely, but I've learned, particularly up here where they're not... The judges aren't always writing learned opinions sometimes.
Can I interrupt for a sec?
Sure.
Historically, how has it gone previous times to check to see if they have checked that, the bridge? I'm thinking of, like, elevators, you know, every year they sign off, it's been inspected. Contractually, how, how does anyone know if CSX has ever? And, I mean, it's not your issue, that's why I'm looking at Pete.
It's probably a regional issue of the entire length of the CSX railroad.
Because how would someone know if it's ever been inspected?
That's why he's going to see if we talk to him if they have maintenance records.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the answer to that, that's why I'm going to call.
And is it ever written down so you can follow along?
Well, I mean, you would think that they would have, you know, an inspection pro... I mean, anybody that owns a bridge normally has an inspection, you know, program. You know, the State Department of Transportation, they go around, I don't know, about every single year, but every two or three years, they do, like, an inspection, all the bridges over, you know, the Hudson River. They probably have, like, a yearly. So you would think that there would be some periodic inspection at a acceptable interval, but, you know, I don't know what they do. So that's why I'm going to make a phone call because, you know, in this case, that, you know, Rogers Point, you know, although it doesn't really affect, you know, the town, the town wants to be a little proactive and just try to, you know, find out, hey, you know, are you guys going to come up, like, and look at this thing or what, so?
Thanks.
See if I can find out.
So, fine, why don't you do that? We'll continue to be available. Our email said that the engineers would like to have a further conversation with you about that. I think we want to take a reasonable approach. We're very concerned, as you can imagine, just about getting into a death spiral of trying to communicate with CSX and having that not go anywhere, so...
I do have a question. I mean, I think I disagree with Mr. Lindberg where he says that the applicant does not... Obviously, the applicant does not have the right to perform evaluations on the bridge. I mean, I see implied ability to do that because you're allowed to prepare plans for work on the bridge, and in order to prepare plans, you'd obviously have to be able to measure and inspect the bridge. So, apart from the right to do it, which I think you probably do have the right to do an inspection, obviously. But, um, is it, is it a cost thing? I mean, I don't know what it entails to inspect a bridge. Is that the issue, that it's, it's a big undertaking, just to say that it can support this weight load? Because what the law requires is that the planning board has to be comfortable in the ability of the way, in this case, the bridge, to support the gross vehicle axle weight of emergency vehicles. So however the planning board gets there, you get there. So if you're comfortable with this approach right now, that there's going to be no increase in load, that'd be one thing. If you want them, if you are still looking for an evaluation, you know, that's something that you can still request. Or if you're comfortable with the fire department saying that it can support the vehicle weight, that's okay too, although I'm not sure that there's a basis for the fire department's letter, unless they are doing some kind of measurements or calculations themselves.
A member of the fire department is here tonight, I believe will be speaking at the public hearing. So this is something we can consider to keep, not consider, but we can keep discussing.
Okay.
And again, it's, sitting up here as we all do, I want to make sure that everyone in the audience understands that we look at safety very carefully, but we're also aware that you can't plan for everything. It's not possible, otherwise there'd be no accidents in the world. It's, things happen that are out of your control. In this instance, as I said, again, just as a layperson, having driven across the bridge many a time and having driven across that bridge at Rogers Point, there's a difference. I feel shaky and wobbly on the Rogers Point, I don't on this one. But if we can take measures to ensure that it's going to be, last for the next 50 years, then that's great. On the other hand, I think Victoria outlined it correctly. The board can also consider the fact that it's, we're not increasing the load on this. It's going to weigh less, as you said, or as has been asserted, than when there's other vehicles that are delivering other items on this thing, so... And we know that there have been similar events held there, nothing's happened so far, so it's just a matter of making sure that we have adequate precautions that nothing happens in the future. That noted, Ms. Axelson, I interrupted you. Continue on, please.
That's okay, it was a good discussion. Hopefully, we'll, we'll work together to resolve that. I was, in my last set of comments, was looking for kind of an inset plan or another plan sheet that would show us the emergency access. And the town zoning administrator also was concerned about this. I know that we have Figure 11. It shows a basic, you know, drawing on an eight-and-a-half by 11. But, so I started to try to look and see what was there on the existing conditions plan. And also, zoning administrator pointed out that it appeared that the emergency access shown on the plans would actually go over lands of Shoals. So I started taking a look at that. And so when I do write up comments, I have a number of questions about... For example, it looks like Shoals has access over this site, which we didn't know. That was kind of what we were looking for when we were asking about any other easements. So we need some clarification on the plans to show that. And then, again, I'm relying on aerial photography and whatever's on the existing conditions plan, and then I looked up a filed map for the site. And it wasn't clear to me at what point on the state parkland there was either an existing road or where this road would go from. And so based on aerial photography, it looks like there doesn't seem to be an existing wood road or something that goes from the state parkland into the project site. So we'll need some clarification about that. Any right-of-way easement? And whether there might be a need for off-site improvements? In other words, to construct that, what appears to be a 20-foot-wide gravel access for that sort of secondary emergency access to the south. I think it's a good idea, and I'm glad to see that you're showing this on the plans, but we're going to need some clarification to make sure that it's okay to run that emergency access through state park, over an improved gravel 20-foot-wide way over Shoals and into the site. It looks feasible, but we need to fill in the blanks.
Some of this was discussed at the last meeting. Ms. Paladaro weighed in. Because it's state parkland and therefore open to the public, she was comfortable with us moving ahead to rely on that as a secondary access for emergency purposes. In addition, we had verbal notification from the fire departments that they actually have the keys to the locks so that they can break in. The park closes at sunset, so it's locked because it leads up to the Mills Mansion. So the fire departments do have keys so they could come through. And I said, I believe in the record last time, that having been on the Mills Board for so, almost a decade, I know where the road goes, how you follow it up to. I never followed all the way to the property line, but it, it doesn't stay gravel road. It's hard-packed road at one point, but it's been used over the years by vehicles for maintenance over on the Mills Norrie site. So, but this is still a good discussion to have because the Shoals does have an easement access through it. I believe there's also a Southlands easement, or maybe one or two to, you can ride horses across. I'm not sure that they're still utilized, but there's, there's... This, this site's been subject to a lot of easements over the years because it's surrounded by two state park sites, basically. So I don't know how that would impact the Shoals easement to have the emergency access over it, but that, I think this can be worked out, obviously.
Well, I mean, I think it would be a safety benefit for all parties involved to have, you know, that kind of access there. That makes perfect sense, so... And then I have some other notes, but it has to do with more technical stuff, and I know that the R E M P, the Rural Event Management Plan, has been, they've begun to revise, but we don't have it yet, and we will have it in a later submittal, so I won't get into that. And those are the major points I just wanted to touch on.
Thank you. So we've received a draft copy of the memo. It'll be issued tomorrow based on any comments you hear tonight, I believe, and sent to you guys. We just, on this case, I wanted her to wait in case there was public comment because we never know.
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you. Mrs. Zatero, additional comments? Thank you for agreeing to contact CSX. I didn't know there was a, I mean, full disclosure, because we've done, I've helped with municipal projects at the Riverfront Park before, it's really tough to get CSX to return a call. It just is. Maybe the maintenance people are better at this, but it's chasing down the unicorn, so to speak, to get them to call. So I'm aware of what you're discussing and how it could add incredibly lengthy delay, so...
Well, you know, the maintenance people, you know, at some point may have to contact the New York people and therein where the problem lies.
I will add, Mr. Andros has a contact that is usually reliable, if we really need one. Pete Andros, that would be. Yeah, he lives right there and he's, he's determined.
Do you want to call and get that number?
No. Based on my last letter to him, no, I don't think so, but you could contact him. He's a very nice guy, former county engineer, so...
Let me try, I'll...
There you go. Ms. Paladaro, additional comments?
No additional comments.
Okay, let me start to my right, Mr. Napoli.
Nice to see you all again. I'm looking forward to events starting. The issue of the noise and changing the times, and if you could be inside my head, which I would not advise you to be, I go back and forth with extending the time. I look at it, this is 70-some-odd acres and it's a large area, and why not? On the other hand, if the band stops at 2:00, I don't know how many people would want to stay without a band till 4:00 AM in the morning. So does that mean the band will continue to play? And no one's going to be standing there policing this, nor should they? So like, do you take away the struggle totally and just say, everything ends at 2:00? That makes it simple, but also is that fair? I'm still going back and forth, and I haven't come up with a reasonable answer, but I have faith in my fellow board members that they will resolve this. That's my only comment.
And this colleague appreciates the fact that you followed my instructions and actually addressed the issue. Thank you. Because that's one thing I wanted to, I wanted to wait to weigh in on it. Thank you.
Because you were talking into the mic and I could hear you.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, comments?
I, I'm okay with extending the event till 4:00 with the music ending at 2:00. I'm okay with that. And I would like to see what can be done about, finding out about the bridge.
Yeah, I think, I think we could just clarify something. What we said in our response, you know, the, your code defines termination of an event as the end of food and entertainment, and then says that there's a reasonable time after that for the event to disperse. What we thought made sense was to draw a distinction between music that's being provided in a fabric structure, because we've agreed no outdoor bands, and most bands won't play out of doors anyway because of the threat of rain to the equipment. But recognizing that the insulating value of a tent is far less than an actual building, what we've said is that if music is being provided in anything other than a permanent structure, meaning the dairy barn, which is the only structure that we're seeking approval for, then it has to end at 2:00. That would constitute the termination of the event under your code, and there's a reasonable time. So it's not as if we're saying we stop the music at 2:00, but we're going to have everyone around playing Pinocchio until 4:00. If, if the music ends at 2:00, the event is terminating at 2:00. But if the music, if and when the CO is issued for the use of the dairy barn for the music, then if it's within a structure, then the music and the event can continue until 4:00. And the theory being that, obviously, if it's wholly within a building, it couldn't conceivably be a noise issue for anyone so far away. And that we were asked with our last submission to justify the reasons why we thought it was reasonable to extend the hours beyond the ones that are provided for 10-acre sites, right? Your code is written for sites as small as 10 acres. We did that in terms of the size of the event, as you pointed out. But I just wanted to clarify, no one is requesting continuation of anything to 4:00 unless music is inside a structure.
Thank you for the clarification, and that solves the dilemma in my head.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Dexter?
Thank you for that, because I was, I was reading your response and I was trying to understand, like... I had forgotten that there was a building that could be used. I know we were talking about all the ones that couldn't be used.
Right.
So...
There's only one, actually.
Right.
I identified the candidates.
Right, right. I personally, I am fine with, with your proposal about going till 4:00 AM inside the building and 2:00 AM in the tent. It's, it's a, it's a huge site. You're bounded on, by open area on, on both sides. I don't have a problem.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I, you know, the CSX issue is, is what it is, but I don't believe your use is going, is, is doing anything... If it's, if that bridge were unsafe, it's, nothing you're doing is changing the access to it, to the site. So I wish Pete a lot of luck and hoping to get in touch with CSX.
Thank you. And before I go on to Mr. Pickett, I'm just going to throw in my quick comment. I'll add more at the end, but I also think that it's fine to extend the music because you're confining it. Again, also, I was almost ready to buy it anyway because of the size of the acreage. But you've added an additional reason for me to be able to hang my hat on to go with the extended hours, so, thank you. Mr. Pickett?
I think you'd already written up in the writing of the proposal, the 2:00 AM for the tent and 4:00 for the building, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
And, and just to clarify, what we thought we would do is rather than pepper you with revised R E M Ps, every time we have a discussion, we'd put it in our letter, and then when we've got a consensus, then we'll put it in the plan.
You made that very clear, and I love the fact that you did all the, the work to provide the best management practices for the tents, et cetera, about what's being done. I mean, that, after Mrs. Zatero raised the issue about potential issues with storms, et cetera, it's very clear that you took that seriously and came back with a detailed set of proposals that will go into the management plan, so, continue, Mr. Pickett, sorry.
Okay, that's what I understood it before. The other, I was also going to wait for public comment on it, just to see what came in on that. The other one is, when people are exiting, I'd still like to see something where you're directing them up the shortest route up to Route 9 instead of through Statsburg, I think. I don't know if there'd be memory signs or something like that.
Yeah, we don't have a problem with that. We were thinking that valets would be directing cars, but that, that's, we believe that that's the approach that...
Right.
99% of the people are going to use anyway, but, again, directional signage, we just want to make sure we're not getting ourselves into a permitting situation about the signs.
Right.
I think it's best if you had someone, because...
Direct, yeah, I think that's really...
And that can be put into the management plan, that if there are valet parkers, which I assume there mostly will be, because where you're parking, you're going to need to... Some people will want to walk up to the tented area, but others may want to be driven by a golf cart, speaking up earlier. At any rate, so we can address that. Thank you.
And then the only other thing, best of luck with the bridge.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
Um, I feel, you know, I'm okay with your plan on the music and, so I'm with, and I, I'm... I hope everything works out on the bridge because it makes all of us a little nervous and hope, you know, we can work around and get, get something done. Anybody can do it, Pete can do it.
Thank you.
A vote of confidence. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ms. Weiser?
I agree with my colleagues. I appreciate your compromise on the time. I think it's, it's just a really good idea.
Great.
So if Pete can't find any recent inspection reports... Well, no, I just want to be, I want to prepare the applicant. Come on, let's not be hesitant.
Closer, closer, thank you.
I'm asking the board that if Pete can't find recent inspection reports, do you want to give the applicant direction as to next steps? Or do you want to wait to see what happens and then have that conversation?
Can't he just camp outside their main office door with a sign?
In New York? Absolutely, I'll go.
I can do that.
I need somebody, I need somebody to help, though.
Victoria just volunteered.
Take notes.
So earlier, Ms. Paladaro raised the question, does anyone have an idea, I mean, how one inspects a bridge? So, earlier, Ms. Paladro raised the question, does anyone have an idea, I mean, how one inspects a bridge? Do you know? Do you, Mr. Sotero?
Does anyone inspect it? I mean.
I mean, is there some particular skill set, or?
Uh, yeah, yeah, well, it's got to be somebody who's familiar with, you know, bridges, yeah, structural. And, you know, you go out and you would look at, you know, the span, you would look at the size, the size of the support beams, and, you know, from that, you can, you can run some quick calculations in terms of, you know, the loading of the bridge. So, I mean, you could get to the point where you would be able to tell that it could, you know, support a certain, you know, load, and then also, you know, you would inspect it to see if you see any cracks or, you know, rusting, you know, or rotting, and so it's, it's not, like, tremendous. I mean, like, how long is this bridge? It can't be that long, right? Just, I haven't seen it.
Off the top of my head, I don't know the length of it, but it's not very big. It's enough to span, basically.
It's probably the same thing, you know, as Rogers', right? Probably the same thing as Rogers', right?
Twenty, twenty-five, somewhere between there.
So it's not like it's huge.
It's just crossing the tracks, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's a single-lane bridge.
It's a structural engineer, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you looking for somebody to sign off on it, or just give an opinion?
Well, it would be a sign off, no matter what.
Well, you would want somebody to, like, produce, like, a report that, that, you know, the bridge is, right, I mean, it's going to have to handle an emergency vehicle, so probably the fire truck's going to be the heaviest vehicle that's going to be there.
Can I just chime in, and just to be clear, I don't think we ever intended that it had to be a CSX engineer.
No.
Okay.
No, 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 no. I'm just sort of gathering information so we can figure out what our next steps are before the end of this. Let me, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? Please come on up. And since it's your first time to appear, be sure you say, I know your name now, but please say your name for the record.
Hi, Jeff Scala from the Roosevelt Fire Department. I'm kind of here preemptively, as you guys are aware. We're working on a merger with Statsburg Fire Department. Chief Bell from there was unable to attend tonight. I know they did a site visit and they were overall pleased with the access road through Mills. There was concern, I guess you're going to take a stump out of the very end. They got to make that one turn. As far as the bridge goes, I wasn't there for the site visit. I know they, it's been existing and they haven't really had a problem with it in the past, but again, that's Chief Bell's call. Ironically, my full-time job is.
You're a bridge inspector.
I work for Metro North.
You're with CSX.
So, I, I happen to work for Metro North and our bridge inspector is in the Poughkeepsie office. If you would like, I could, with you offline, I will talk to him tomorrow, see if he, he has a co-part in CSX that I can get contact for you.
Sure.
Great. I'll give you my card for you, Lee.
Wow. Great, thank you. And the only other question that we had talked about when we met with Chief Bell the other night is, you have the manor house listed as kind of like bride headquarters. We were wondering, is that going to be occupied during events, or is that overnight guests?
No, it's not part of the, that's not part of the events.
It's not part of the rural event at all.
Oh, okay, so we misread the packet that we got to the, okay, very well, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Scala.
That's excellent.
Really, thank you, Mr. Scala. We look forward to working with you on this. And how fortuitous.
Yeah.
Literally. Actually, I kind of got goose flesh when he said ironically my other job, so. Would anyone else from the public like to speak about this application? Okay, so, I believe we heard a consensus that it's okay for the hours and the music to be extended, which is great, and again, thank you for, as I said, it's the in-depth response that made it easier for that. I need to go over just a couple of items that Ms. Moss asked me to address. So, and this is for the entire board to think about as well. Ms. Moss notes that in 108-28.1, it says that all eventually be provided with adequate potable water and sanitary systems as determined by the planning board engineer or Department of Health. We need to make sure that we're all aware that the applicants are stating in the, in the application that there, that all water will be brought in from, will be brought in from the outside, so that you're not relying on the existing wells, et cetera, for the site to supply drinking water, et cetera, for this, right?
That's correct, and we can put a note on the plans.
I, it's.
Is it on the plans? Is that note on, but it's, it's the code, though.
It's, it's, it's written into your narrative. We just want, we need to have a note written into, it's, yeah, it's the way the law's written, it's not for the rural events. The issue that Ms. Moss was concerned about, about the emergency access, she was afraid that, that the way the plan was shown, that it appears as though the main entrance is not an emergency access as well, so if there was something happened that they would, that the fire department would somehow go through Mills Mansion rather than using the main entrance, I, I don't know how to resolve that, except that I've spoken to the fire department now here publicly, so to speak, but I don't think that the fire department would somehow be confused, but she was worried that that would happen somehow, so. Her suggestion was that you label the main entry, emergency, or main entry plus emergency access or something. I'm, I'm not sure if that's necessary, but again, she had some concern. She also had concern that grassing, that grass parking area C, now B, appears to open onto adjoining parcels. She wants to make sure that there, that somehow it's controlled, that you don't start parking on the state park land site next door. I'm not sure what that would be. I, I thought there was a fence over there, but maybe there's not along the way. She wants to make certain that we don't, that the, I guess we'll call it the northern bridge is not used for anything but pedestrian access. I believe that we've just talked about that as well. That point we've taken care of. She had a concern that if you have, that, that at some point you may not have enough parking spaces, including staff, support staff, for the event, but I believe that I saw that there's some parking shown roughly north near the parking, near the traffic, the train tracks, sorry, that I think that must be to be for, for support staff. It's, I can show you on the plans, it's.
We've got four hundred and one, we eliminated B, which is now C, A, B. We've got two hundred and seventy spaces in A and a hundred and forty-seven in B. So there's, there are thirty-six spaces behind what's known as the.
The piggery.
Yep, and a hundred and eleven spaces that are to the west of and basically around.
Did I see some parking back up in through here, maybe, proposed, like, right in through there, or am I wrong?
No.
It shows a fabric structure.
That's a potential fabric structure location, but not parking.
Okay, so you would normally put staff, or people like caterers, et cetera, in through the piggery spots, that's what I thought. She just wanted that clarified. Then, we got the eagles. Reminded you that fireworks requires a permit from the town board, and Tad wanted to make sure that, I believe you just clarified it as well, but that the main house, the manor house and the pool area are not included as part of the rural events venue, because you're not going to have people swimming back and through there at night after the wedding. I guess, I should say, necessarily, yes. That's more that la dolce vita, like, existence. Sorry. So, would, when would you like to adjourn the public hearing too, so we can wait to have some more information coming back and forth? Should we do this in two weeks?
Well, we were thinking about, we're waiting for county planning, right, which won't be until after the second. The distribution to the agencies, which I understand includes the fire, town fire inspector, that, that probably also won't be.
So just wait for a month?
So why don't we do it for a month?
Just giving you the option. I mean, the fact that we only heard from the fire department makes me think that we're not going to have a lot of public comment on this.
Right.
But you never know, we may have some now that word gets out, because this only went, the notice being mailed to the adjacent owners mainly went to New York State.
Well, like we said, we don't have any neighbors.
It, since these are televised, it may be that someone in the village hears about it and comes up to speak, so, then, I.
Well, that's fine, but I think in the meantime, let's not be strangers, right? Let's keep.
Oh, no, 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 you know, we're never strangers.
The bridge, et cetera, so we can try to be addressing these issues in the meantime.
For that matter, I remember I was going through withdrawal for a while without talking to you, Mr. Boudreau on Melfield in the hotel. I'm like, wow, wait, no! And I was being a little judging there for it, so.
Isn't the laundry house on a separate piece of property back there?
That's the Shoals' property.
Yes, the former laundry is now Mr. Shoals'.
Right, so they were notified.
Oh, yes.
Is there, is there an easement across Shoals' property, indeed?
You mean four Shoals across this property?
No. But that's what you were asking about earlier, right?
Yeah, there's a, there's a. But there's a right-of-way that appears to, you know, continue from.
No, I know that Shoals has access over this property, but you were asking about access over Shoals' property, correct, earlier?
Yes, because it looked like the emergency access was going to be going over Shoals', so you would need a new.
Yeah, so I, I think, why don't we try to provide you with a comprehensive response to that comment? And we'll get your letter tomorrow, so we'll be doing that, and we'll try to respond, you know, within a week or ten days or something like that, which would give us ample time to be ready for the sixteenth, I think it is.
It is.
Yep, and we'll turn it around.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's more reasonable to have that as a date, because then I think we can have answers to these questions.
Yeah.
I know Pete's great at getting people on the phone, and he's gotten a kind of extraterrestrial aid tonight. This will give him a more extensive time to get, make those contacts, too.
Thank you. So make it a motion to adjourn this public hearing to May sixteenth.
So move.
On favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you. I think we're really, I think we're getting closer. Actually, we're pretty close now.
Yeah, I think so, too.
So.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a workshop for Jeffrey Grove Estates. The applicants are seeking to re-subdivide and obtain site plan amendment approval. The location is three nine dash forty-one North Cross Road. As a reminder, this application was originally approved with a number of townhomes, as well as nine single-family homes. The applicants are here to propose a re-subdivision for the portion of the parcel that had the nine single-family homes. Thank you.
Yeah, it's still warm.
And this is continuing back and forth with us. We've already been workshopping this proposal. Let me turn it over to you gentlemen.
Good evening, members of the board. Louis Cowman for the applicant owner. I, Brian Watts from M A Day, and I had met with Pete and Liz to go over some of the comments to the plans that they had, and they will be incorporated, and I'd like to turn it over to Brian, and basically, my understanding of tonight would be to hear from the board if they have any additional comments, so that he can prepare the next set of drawings.
Mr. Watts?
Good evening. Thank you. Since our last meeting, we've tried to make a more comprehensive plan submission to you, taking into account the items you mentioned at the last meeting, the site visit, and we included five-foot sidewalks. The scope, the plan is, is remaining the same, the overall site plan, except for five-foot sidewalks. We, we do show that now on the Blair roadside.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
This was also one of, a new plan sheet that the board requested, showing the limits of disturbance, the previously approved limits of disturbance. The outside of the hatching and Blair Road wastewater treatment plant. This hatched area, we are now removing. That would be the areas, the wetland disturbance would be the areas around the pond. We no longer have common driveways going up to these two, in my opinion, not really desirable lots to begin with. They're, I mean, they're back, they're up on a hill. These, again, were residential lots, so we eliminated all those. We are continued, the area of disturbance, except for a very small portion, falls entirely in the areas reviewed. We're also showing the setback requested in the bill, in the frontage. Two-unit block here is pushed back four feet from the others. That matches this side as well. We can't go too much more than that, just because of the grading in the back of the pond, it kind of limits us. These have different finished floor elevations, so you also have verticals as well as horizontal difference. We added the mailbox in between the two buildings to try and share the burden of having to walk to the mailbox equally amongst the, the occupants. There was parking here previously. It was eliminated to make room for the light post, which, so that we have plenty of light over the mailboxes. And this one property was burdened with quite a bit of stuff in front, and we didn't feel that was fair to him or going to help resell or anything. My understanding is the town promotes on-street parking.
We do.
There's going to be plenty of area opportunity in the, in the Hammerhead. This, these guys have long driveways. They can get an extra car in there. This, we're keeping this here, is it allow a place to pull off in the event that the pump station would need any kind of maintenance or service or anything of that sorts. See, we, we are showing a split rail fence in the rear of the property now to delineate where the limits of the pond, it'll be towards the top of the slope. This would be a one-on-three slope. We can go a little steeper. We're trying not to. That was also requested, just as a measure of attempt at safety. I mean, if somebody who's inclined to climb this hill, fence probably not going to stop them if, if they climb up that, but we provided that. We've filled in some of the blanks that we had previously in the tables. There, we have added landscaping and lighting plan. As originally approved, Daniel's Way did have street trees. We are continuing that, the same species of trees. I've actually added some additional ones to take into account that we have more driveways and they extend farther up now. We maintain a crisscross pattern, and the trees will be, fall in, in between the driveways at the boundary of the main grouping of the houses. Further, break that up. Have some evergreen trees, kind of as a barrier between the two of them, to kind of separate one main building from the other. Have some additional green here, evergreen trees to try and shield the pump station from these, from these buildings. I have shown the limits of the existing tree line, as in the existing conditions, and we now include the border of where we're proposing, the limits of disturbance. This is driven by the location of the pond and the limitations of the grading on this side. This was pulled from the previously approved Blair Road. It's not very detailed. We're going to try and pick a very specific light fixture and not duplicate this, but for the time being, I have included it. It's not shown, but intent is to limit that to twelve feet, as required. Each garage and door will also have a residential light fixture, wall mount. I've shown, our intent is like a sixty, typical sixty-watt style light bulb will provide that as well. They should complement the two light posts. Two light posts, one by the mailbox again, and one by the extra parking, which also will help illuminate the pump station if need be, so we don't have spotlights necessarily at all times. The, this isn't from us, but just to give the idea, the wastewater treatment plant site, this fence was the limit to the previously approved, is in the same location as previously approved. Everything that is changing is in that fence, so nothing there is changing. Entrance is staying the same, the location, all that, staying the same. And this is a rendering of what the wastewater treatment plant's going to look like. This was also, the materials will match what we have for the townhouses. I will be sending this as, obviously, as a PDF, and I'll, I'll try to get the more typical north-south, east-west elevations for these buildings as well. A beige siding, white trim with a brick, brick surround on the bottom. It will match, you're not going to see much of this. We're going to limit this, the clearing for that site.
I have to say real quickly, that's a more attractive building than what we usually get to house a wastewater treatment. It looks nice.
Well, I, I tried to bring samples because this wasn't in color.
It looks like a house.
Color house. I, I did leave a note on the plan that the board can revisit the landscaping if the trees that are left in place is not adequate to screen the wastewater treatment plant. That was what was on approved before on Blair Road and the original approval. We intend to adhere to that with this as well. I think that's.
Thank you.
Majority of the improvements.
Let me just say two things. One, I appreciate your, the way you changed the plans and so detailed a fashion. Two, when Ms. Dexter and I, who, along with Mr. Murphy, the longest-serving board members up here, when we. Two, when Ms. Dexter and I, who along with Mr. Murphy, the longest-serving board members up here, when we joined, this was sort of already in process, and we were told, "Don't get too much into it unless you see something like glaring." So we didn't, I think both of us. And this actually, application precedes even Mr. Murphy, but he was on it, the board, a year before we joined. The reason I'm saying this is, I hadn't actually looked at all the details when I inherited somebody else's plans. I looked at overall. The biggest thing that I noted was that had I been on the board, and probably Ms. Dexter, we might have pushed back about some of the rock removal that's not this portion of it, but the original road. But I didn't even look at the lights. I didn't look at where the mailboxes were or anything. And today, or this, when I looked last week at the lighting, I thought, "Ooh." So I'm glad you agree, because it's not really the kind of light pole that we need or want, and it's also shedding light out without being cast more down, I could tell. So if you need us to send you some light suggestions, I've got some on hand from other things we've seen, but you probably can find what you want on your own. It's easy to find those things.
Yeah, we have a couple of suppliers with some very nice designs. So, you know, we'll, we're going to, we'll work that one.
I, I have to say, having looked at the site you're doing at the old Dutton and Poughkeepsie, you're doing a pretty Class A job over there. And I see by the fact that you proposed an exterior to a wastewater treatment plant that looks a heck of a lot better than what we normally see. You're trying, you're going to carry through your same aesthetics over here, too.
Yeah, that, that little black and white thing didn't do it justice. It'll look a lot better, because it, you know, you can't have this ugly building and the, the nice townhouses. So we're going to dress that up a little, too.
And also, just to note, we will need the cross-section buildings and the elevations before we send it to DC planning, so we're not, we're prepared to do some things tonight. Reaffirm seeker, and also set a public hearing on this, but before we can send over to county planning, because this is on a county road. We, it won't be a complete application. You don't want her kicking it back in any way. But from what I can tell, when I reviewed everything, everything else is complete. Thank you for all of it. I did, I didn't have any questions with the landscaping. I thought it looked nice what you proposed, honestly. Is that good or bad?
Wow. That's, that's good. I, we'd looked at the landscaping and they'd addressed our technical comments. And my thing was to say to you tonight, I want to hear from the board on landscaping, so.
You heard from me, but that's one of the things I tend to look at first, because you get a lot of bang for your buck with good landscaping. The other issues that I just needed to bring up are that we need to figure out if you're going to have a homeowners association or not, who's maintaining the sidewalks and landscaping grounds. It's something that we just should know about. And also, we now, the town board no longer, we, we form drainage districts to make sure that maintenance of stormwater detention ponds, et cetera, is maintained properly, so that'll need to be addressed probably by Victoria. That's all I kind of have on my sheets. Let me turn it over. Ms. Axelson, comments?
Yeah, again, I like the compact design. I like the fact that there are rentals, because there's the demand in, in the region. Sorry, had to get that in there. These are nice, but the planning board will probably have comments about the architecture, because they're a little more sophisticated than I am about that. And then at our offline meeting, which is pretty constructive, we talked a little bit about lighting, whether there would be wall mounts on the individual units, and the idea was, instead of providing photometrics for all the lighting on one sheet, to give a typical photometric for a wall-mounted light. And we just, Pete will talk about phasing. And then we talked about having some of the notation from Noiki's report about the birds and the bees as planned notation. So pardon me, I'm punchy. And those are the main points. The rest were technical.
Thank you. Mrs. Sotero?
Yeah, we did have a good, good meeting last Friday. So we went through all the items that were in our February 22nd memo, and some of the things that we highlighted. They're going to look at some additional drainage at the buildings in the back, because there's a, there's a slight slope from the pond down towards the back, back of the unit, so Brian's going to look at doing something behind there, also where the roof leaders are going to go. And so they're going to work on a new submission, and Brian talked about the lights. They were discussed. And we talked a little bit about phasing, because it was kind of a combined plan that you guys had for Blair Road and for Daniel's, Daniel's Way. So I think we, I don't remember exactly how likely we left it, but I think you guys are going to look at it, because what I said was you didn't want to box yourself in, you wanted to be able to have some flexibility. You know, what our concern was, and I think we talked about updating some of the notes that you had to clarify some things on, you know, the phasing, because we want to make sure, similar to what we did for Enclave, that we want to make sure that all of the infrastructure is in and the road is in up to the top course before any building permits can be issued. So we talked about some of that stuff, and then, I know you had phases one through like nine, 10, 11, but I don't know if you guys, you know, had talked about that anymore? Or are you going to just go update that on the next set of plans?
Yeah, we're going to update that. You know, the, the reason why there were so many phases was because Tannet explained to us that in order to get a CO on the entire, you have to have that entire building, which each phase is a building. So that particular building would have to be complete, including landscaping, et cetera.
Right, right, right. And then I think, and I think now you say that, and we discussed changing one of, one of the notes to allow, you know, the flex, flexibility that even though it's labeled Phase 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, that you don't have to follow 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
I thought you already was in there.
You can.
Yeah, that actually is in there.
I thought you already had it.
Something similar, we're going to.
You can jump back and forth a little.
We need to tweak the notes a little bit.
The numbers are there, they're numbered, but you're not following necessarily the order.
Right, right. And we're going to make it very clear.
We want to make it clear.
That the entire road will be in, so as an example, if we seek to build the 38 units first, the original, the already approved, that the entire Blair Road will be complete but for the top course. And of course, all the utilities and services that would function for any building, you know, we couldn't, you know, so sewer water, electric gas, et cetera, would be in, installed, accepted, so that, and then an entire building would be complete before we would seek a CO on any particular unit within that building. So if that's not clear in Brian's notes, we will make it very clear.
I thought it was, but that's okay. If we need further clarification, we can get it. Thank you.
So we're good for now.
Ms. Palladaro?
I've already provided the applicant with the draft list of conditions regarding the, the road district, the drainage district, the sidewalks, et cetera. So you have them, and I'm sure you're looking at them.
It's not dated, but I think I've had this for a while, haven't I?
Yes. Yes. I'm just reminding them that.
That's from 2007.
No, it's, it's February 28th, 2018, so we were making sure that you had this in advance so that you could maybe address some of the issues, so they didn't have so many conditions on them, and we do consider approval. And again, not to let anybody in the audience know how we're going to vote, because that's not legal, but in the past, our past first few meetings, I believe you've heard from the entire board about echoing what Ms. Axelson said earlier, that it's a better design now, we think. It's more compact, it's less intrusive into the environment, and it really makes more sense to have townhomes next to townhomes than it does this hybrid thing together there, I think. So, and I'll add, we did a sidewalk as well there with Mr. Watts and Mr. Sotero. And thank you for letting me be cranky, by the way, at the second sidewalk. I should have added my apologies to you.
No apology needed. It was understood, given the circumstances.
Well, he threw off the golfers, as I was appreciating.
No, no, it wasn't, we, there was some people illegally golfing at your site, doing other things. But at any rate, it was an interesting sidewalk for us, because it's been a long time since I'd been over there, like a long time since the first approval. And I know Ms. Dexter and I could, Ms. Weiser, we could easily see what grading was, what's necessary. But it's also, it's going to be nice if you're actually in this newer section to be able to gaze onto the pond in the back. I think it's going to be a real amenity for sales.
Yeah. Well, just to sell it a little bit, the pond now is part of that open space, too, you know, so, you know, that's for the benefit of all the residents there, rather than just the particular loaner, lot owners surrounding the pond.
But it's pretty, and you can tell it's man-made. It's not as though it's, so anyway, I think it's amenity for everyone. Ms. Palladaro, is that your only comment about the, providing the draft language for the conditions?
Well, I mean, the, it was two pages of draft language.
I know.
Right.
There was a lot that went into it. Pete just asked about the HOA, and I was just stating again that we would be requiring a skeleton HOA to be formed, just because the lots could be sold individually in the future. And then the board tonight can consider reaffirming seeker. It has enough information before it, as well as classifying the subdivision as a major subdivision and accepting for sketch.
And I believe we're going to set a public hearing as well. So let me start to my inner left. Mr. Pickett, any comments?
Surprise.
Surprise, surprise, yeah. Yeah, we had samples here if required, or you said if required. You knocked that one off. So the only other one I had was, sorry, lighting plan was taken care of. That's at another time. Just the vegetation around the wastewater treatment plant, what, just to kind of be definitive around that, because it's, you have a nice building now, but I think you'd plan for.
Again, the, everything outside of the property was as approved. We haven't changed any of that. The existing tree line will be, remain intact as, basically on the other side of the fence, with the exception of where they have to run the utilities themselves. The area in front of the building, as much of that will be retained as possible. The prior approval in 2007 did not include any additional landscape. It included a note, though, that you had the right to revisit this before, at some, any other date, to make sure that what's left here is adequate to provide the appropriate screening. We've included that note back on the landscaping. So I haven't shown any.
Additional.
Additionally, I haven't gone beyond what was already approved. I've also reiterated that note, because it is important. And I'm thinking with such a nice building, we might want to, if you catch a glimpse of it, it won't be so bad.
I, that's what I was saying. I'm actually shocked how nice it is. I'm not shocked, it's you, but I'm surprised. It's not, this is, this is not one that gives you necessarily a rate of return off your investment, but it's nice to see.
Those are my only two concerns presently. Thank you.
Mr. Murphy?
No, I have no concerns. I like the architecture, I like the little windows. I think they're nice.
Hearing, hearing positive is good. No concerns is good. Ms. Weiser?
It's nice to see this moving along, and I'm looking forward to seeing your ideas on lighting and then the rest of the elevations. Thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
Is this for both, both sides?
Yeah, they're both going to be similar in design, yeah.
All I can remember is that when we did have this before the last time, I remember looking at, when we looked at the elevations, it was kind of like, really? I mean, it, it just seemed like they could have done a lot better.
Yeah, well, the outside's nice now, but you should see what's going to go on inside. We put in some very nice finishes.
She's saying also, this is better than, this is better than the original elevations that were approved.
Yeah, because I'm looking at this, I, there was something about the trim, or we were like, couldn't you, there was something weird about it. But these look very modern and nice and lots of windows. I'm just thinking that inside is going to be bright and airy and gorgeous.
Are you renting one?
Hey, you know, we are looking to downsize at some point, but I did want to thank you also for doing a sidewalk, because that, for me, really helped to see the changes and how much more compact everything is. Yeah, it's just a much better project.
It saves a lot of the natural layout now.
Yes, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
Thank you for providing this 3D rendering. It's, it's nice. I'm looking forward to seeing that. I love the different peaks on the roof line and the windows detail. It's really good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Nepali?
I will add comments like my fellow board members, that we, that I am very pleased with the renditions. They truly do look lovely. Is this hardy board type fiber cement, or is this vinyl siding?
No, it's a hardy blank.
It is hardy board. I did take a few minutes to briefly, as you all know, you can spend hours doing renditions, but especially after seeing the pitches. I am not suggesting that they look exactly like this, but just some type of maybe the overall.
A gooseneck, a gooseneck?
Yeah, like a gooseneck. Trying to see what would go in, because I had taken some others. But Mr. Oliver helped me edit out once we saw the housing. But I, I also agree, I think these, something like this might go well for you.
I'm just wondering if he put any lighting in, like, no.
Those are just suggestions? I mean, you could also try to coordinate with what your wall mounts are going to be on the units themselves, whatever you'd like.
Right, right.
I don't think that I really need to make much of a conclusion on this one. I think you've heard, again, positive comments about the layout, the architecture that you're proposing. Mr. Sotero is going to be working with you, with you, Mr. Watts, on some of the drainage issues still.
Yes.
As we go forward. I like the fact that you're keeping as much of the tree line as you can in the site. We, in visiting it, we're aware that there's a lot that will need to be regraded, unless you want to stand like this everywhere inside your house. And I'm not sure who has the resolutions, because I said, now that we received the information from Mr. Noiki, we can reaffirm prior seeker. And we have a resolution prepared, classify the subdivision and accept it for sketch, which is the first step before we do preliminary and then final approval, et cetera. Okay? Who has these?
I do.
Oh, good, that's right.
Townified Park Planning Board Resolution: Reaffirming Prior Seeker Determination of Nonsignificance for Jeffrey Groves Estates. Resolution number 2018-04. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its prior seeker finding of nonsignificance. Finding that the project as proposed will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
And I have another one. Townified Park Planning Board Resolution: Classifying the subdivision and accepting the sketch plan for Jeffrey Groves Estates. Resolution number 2018-04A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a major subdivision, and two, accepts the sketch plan in accordance with the provisions of Section 96-12C of the Code.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries again. When would you like us to set the public hearing?
What do you think, Brian?
I mean, remember, it's going to take, it's going to take 30.
Yeah, keep in mind that this project still needs to be referred to county planning.
Right.
It can't be referred until you submit the lighting and elevation.
Okay, so then, can you do it? How long, how, how early, you know, how prior to a meeting do you need to have the plans set?
Well, so you just submitted a recent revision, revised plan set. You're in the pipeline, so to speak. I mean, technically, you would need to submit tomorrow for the next meeting. But because you're already in the pipeline.
Probably a week. It would be all right with a week.
Do you want to put it on for the next meeting for circulation to county only, and then set the hearing?
For the May 16th meeting? Would that be acceptable to you guys?
That sounds reasonable.
Because county plan's going to take, for this, they may have comments, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they're going to look at everything.
It may be since it's all residential, they go, "We don't care."
The other, the other option would be to authorize referral to county planning as soon as the revised elevations are submitted.
And lighting plan. Would you like, if you're going to get them in a week, that way we don't have to take, we don't, we can get it going faster. That makes sense to you? Mr. Kaufman?
I'm just looking at May 2 and remembering I'm in another town.
No, no, no. What I'm saying, what we're saying is, we could authorize.
Tonight.
The planning board secretary tonight to issue, to refer the plan set to DC planning. We would do by motion rather than resolution, once a complete set is submitted.
That's great.
I would so move that.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so as soon as you can get a, a complete plan set, i.e. with elevations and the lighting, then you can send it out.
The next, the next formal action would be May 16th, then, right?
The next public, we would set a public hearing, so make it a motion to set a public hearing for May 16th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll hear from you before May 16th, and we'll see you May 16th.
Yeah, the 15th, maybe, I don't know.
Don't worry, Mr. Kaufman, you're making progress every step of the way. Your aidly help helps by your consultant.
Hopefully, it won't take another 10 years. Okay, great.
Well, yeah. Oh, by the way, for the board certification. Oh, by the way, for the board certification, um, Mr. Kaufman and, is it, and Mr. O'Neill are the proud owners of...
Oh, right.
Crofton Muse, formerly Crofton Muse.
The Townee Center?
Townee Center, Carriage Trail, the Townee Center.
It's now officially called 1269 Route 9G, until we sort out a marketing name.
And I believe...
It's been on the books for a year or two.
That, that, that project was originally approved in 87?
Well, it was kicking around back then.
It had some approvals.
I wasn't even a twinkle in my daddy's eye back then.
Well, I was long past a twinkle.
So was I.
Congratulations.
If you're, this is the first time we've seen a new investor come into this application, and I, I need to make sure I stress this, because we've said it every time when they were getting extensions, which you've requested one. Because substantial work was started, I mean, that site is a lunar landscape, it's, and then it just stopped, and it's been sitting there all that, and it's, it's not good for a town to see something, you know, for our citizens to see plans run their way and then just stop. It's sort of depressing.
Well, well, hopefully we have a little bit of a track record in the county now.
You do.
And so, you know, what we say is clearly...
Yes.
...the possibility. I just, you know, we have water in for the first section, I just got to track that down, because someone said okay to backfill it. And there's also some storm improvements in, so I'm checking out with, unfortunately for Cynthia, I'm probably going to ask her about the storm, but the water's not on you guys.
We were trying to find, we were trying to find elevations the other day, Ms. Weeman and I, so...
Well, you know.
But no, it's exciting that you're moving that forward. Again, it's a project that, uh, I'm, I'm not sure it ever made complete just economic sense, but since we now have things moving forward again, it's good to see if this might happen.
Yeah, well, we lose money on every job, but we make it up on the quantity.
Wasn't it 330 apartments at the first? It was...
It's 317, yeah, so.
Yeah.
So at any rate, we'll sue them back in a month?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Salt Point Sol... Ah, you've been waiting patiently all this time. I couldn't figure out who was here for Salt Point Solar.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Ann Whaling.
Hold on, can you just read into the record, sorry?
I'm Ann Whaling from Cypress Creek Renewables. My colleague, Brian, couldn't be here tonight, so I apologize that he's not here. He's normally the one that would be, but I, hopefully we can have a good discussion, and I can answer any questions you might have.
You've been sitting out there so patiently, you surely have realized you'll have a good discussion.
I, I think so. This is looking to be an enjoyable evening, shaping right up.
Thank you. So, um, as a reminder to the audience, and again, we're in workshop, no more public hearings tonight. The applicants are seeking approval for a solar farm, a solar array farm, however you want to call it. The town board adopted last year a law specifically to encourage these, um, and you're actually, again, the first out of the gate on this law as well. And just like with the locusts, it's exciting to see that when we craft legislation, it actually produces results. I mean, seriously, that's exciting. This, uh, site is technically at 525 Salt Point Turnpike, but for those in the audience who don't have access to the plans, it's really a sort of a confluence of where East Dorsey, Cream Street, and Salt Point Turnpike all converge. So the entrance and the parcel number is on Salt Point, but the more casual entrance that I believe you'll be using is on East Dorsey. So when we refer this, we'll be referring it to the town highway department to make sure it's a proper entrance, et cetera. Also, in the interim, uh, some of us did a site visit along the way. Uh, I put a memo into the file on this, so everyone is aware. But in essence, what we saw was a lot of empty space, because there was a lot of tree removal in advance, uh, and that's, part of that is because the owner of the site originally intended to plant hops for his beer brewing business, but I'm taking it that somehow firms such as yours were doing, looking at topoes going, "Look, a naked site!" Aye.
Yeah, we, we start out actually by looking for proximity to interconnection.
Mm-hmm.
And so then we kind of narrow it down. But yeah, a big open space in an area like this is, is what we look for.
And this was originally a farm as well. I'll also note that, uh, Ms. Weiser, zoning administrator Moss, and I attended a conference on just solar, uh, energy, solar plans, et cetera. It was held at the Wallace Center and conducted by Sina Cutson. It was eye-opening. Yes, the first thing you would look for would be whether or not you're close enough to lines that would have storage capacity. Um, I've told some of the board, but one of the frustrating things at the meeting was, we kept being told that very few of these are being built. And when we talked to some of the project sponsors, like yourself, who sounded frustrated that they would have to spend a lot of money through planning boards, only to be, only to discover later on that they, it couldn't be done, I thought, why is that? But we discovered, the, uh, Public Service Commission and the utilities are in a process of trying to identify in a granular way where actual storage can be, but right now, they've only, I think it's four steps, they're in the middle, they've completed step two. So you can see a long line and say, oh, there's capacity on that line, but whether it's the specific site next to, is still up in the air, and apparently the utility does not have to tell you whether they can do it at that location, until you get all the permits from the town.
Yeah, we have to go through an extensive process, and we do submit an interconnection request, and then we pay for an additional system interconnect study, and it tells us how much the upgrades are going to be, maybe. And then, you know, and so we have an idea that it may or may not work, and, at least that there's room. And then we have a range that we expect that our interconnection costs will fall into.
It's, like I said, it was an eye-opening experience to read about. And just as an aside, the state, because it's going, it set ambitious goals for the year 2030, I believe.
Yes.
Um, the state is also looking extensively at wind power, and my first guess was, well, there's nothing around here that would be good for wind power, to which I was told by a person who has, has expertise in that. Oh, no, the top of the gunks would be beautiful, but we're not going to bother proposing that because we know what the reaction would be. Even from the greenest people, it might not be so happy.
Well, it's like, like the under on decks, right? The ridgeline protection is just...
I'd love to see it.
Yeah, I would too. I used, I used to do wind, and then it fell out of fashion, so now I do solar.
There, the areas to the western, western portion of New York is, they're going to be going after a lot of wind farms up there, also in the north, you're right, but it's unfortunate that there's opposition to something like that, so. And one of the reasons why this law was crafted, we were the first in the county to do it, and sitting in the, uh, sessions that day, we were asked, they were asked how many towns had it, and they, a bunch of arms went up, and I thought, wait a minute, and I realized afterwards, those were, people were there from all over the state, it wasn't just right here in Duchess County. So, but it is easier for us, it is easier for applicants to go through, once you have a law like we do, enumerating everything, because otherwise you've got to wedge in through public utility, other things that are in the zoning already.
Right, absolutely. I mean, we, we sat through a lot of your public hearings on your ordinance. I was here for those, actually, and so some of you look familiar to me. And, uh, and it's always nice when a town does take that initiative, we appreciate it.
Well, enough about the background. Um, what would you like to tell us? The microphone's yours, would you like to tell us about the application?
Okay, I guess...
We've already had it introduced to us, you revised it, sent it back to us.
Exactly. I mean, just to quickly cover the items that we've submitted in this last submission, we updated the civil set. Um, we've done a preliminary viewshed assessment, which I'd like to talk to you about a little bit more. Uh, a slightly revised decommissioning plan, a revised seeker document. Uh, we've updated the glare study. Uh, we've provided a wetlands report, a revised survey, some review responses. Um, and to note, our civil set now includes a landscape plan, which is the final page of that, uh, which produces some large buffers. Uh, so I, the design changes primarily are, um, an adjustment of the layout based on 100-foot setbacks from the stream, some landowner access through the center of the parcel to his remaining property, and relocation of the interconnection point. So my concerns center around, um, our visual study that we produced to you is very preliminary. We thought we might be able to have a discussion about what visual study or further visual aids you might like to see, what type. Um, a question about if you felt like there was, uh, good timing to circulate for lead agency, and that was, that was pretty much it. Any board questions that you might have?
A resolution is prepared to circulate for lead agency, you'll be happy to know.
That's wonderful.
Um, the town, again, I guess the reason why I went through all that opening remarks is, the town is interested in having more energy sources like this. That's why they passed a law in the first place, was to facilitate it. So, um, there's a presumption, in other words, that this is a good thing. Uh, and I'm going to go to the consultants, but just real quickly, the viewshed is something that I've been thinking about. Uh, some of the board members know that I took a walk, a hike up Peach Hill Park...
Okay.
...which is just on the other side of, uh, it's a, I can't remember if it's 90 acre or 140 acre, it's a huge park. Um, and, actually, Mr. Oliver lives near here. Have you walked up there before, Chris?
I have.
So essentially, there's a large hill, and once you get up to the top, it's like a, a wheel. There's a clear center area, and then there's, where each spoke would be is a just separate viewshed. This does fall within one viewshed, uh, of their view of the gunks, as they call it here, in the valley, the river valley. One thing I noted is that, because I did this and leaf off, I, I would be able to see where the array is, but also having done our site walk, we were discussing where some, uh, additional screenings should be located. So one of the things I thought about was assessing, um, because this is a public amenity, the park, is what impacts it would possibly have from there, from, uh, that site. It's a rigorous hike, I can assure you.
Is it accessible by car?
Nope.
No.
You've got to drive up, park, and then you hike. Um, and it's a little, it's like a maze after a while. I got so turned around, and I was trying to find landmarks, I found Mount Beacon, and I, I felt like I turned around and went 20 feet and then found another view of Mount Beacon, thought, wait a minute, I should be in it, so I, it, it's like hands-on growing meat and bread crumbs as you go.
Well, we can do a lot from Google Earth.
Of course you can, that's what I was saying.
And so, what's the name of the park?
Peach Hill Park.
Peach Hill, thank you.
Otherwise, when we were up where the arrays would be, we noted that because some trees had been removed, uh, as part of the prior owners' removal, from, uh, East Dorsey, there are a couple of houses that would be able to see this, so we would propose some evergreens. That's really it, that I saw. Um, I'll let the rest of the board weigh in on that. I noted that, uh, it looks like you'll need to do a phase one analysis, a material search from SHPO.
We did phase one and got back that we need to do a phase...
One B.
Phase one B, yeah.
That's what I thought. So you'll have to do the next step.
Yep, so we will notify you, we've already submitted for that, so we'll let you know when, when we get a result back from that.
Great, thank you. Those are my only comments, so Ms. Axelsson, comments?
Um, yeah, just, I want to just touch briefly on the, the visual thing, because having either prepared or reviewed a number of visual impact analyses in my career, um, the things to bear in mind have to do with the number of viewers or visitors to a scenic resource that are going to see this project. Obviously, the height, um, obviously, looking down the road, what would the mitigation be if there was a visual impact? Which would be buffering. I don't know, you know, other than not building the project, which I don't, in my professional opinion, find to be an acceptable option at all. And I also think that, so honestly, I hadn't made any comments on visual impact analysis, because I thought to myself, these, you know, panels are 12 feet?
Yeah, from ground level, they can be buffered with a hedge.
Right, so, so I really hadn't done much, hadn't encouraged identifying viewpoints. I think it's good that you've identified the park. And, and then the other sort of broader view thing that I would say is, it's important to weigh various environmental issues, and so if it means that you might see a solar array from some spot, um, you could balance it against the fact that the solar energy plant is perhaps offsetting something you can't see, um, which you're...
You don't have to really worry about that.
So anyway, that's, that's my little speech on that.
The reason why I say that is, I'll make two points. One, I was curious, because I could see, I mean, when I walked Peach Hill Park, there was still snow on the ground, and I could see that whatever was across the way, that hill, it, when we were first on the site, I kept looking going, that looks like something, it's something. I couldn't tell what it was, but the pattern of, the, with the way the paths are cleared, I knew there was something there, and then when I went online, when I did the Google search too, and saw it was Peach Hill Park, um, I decided to walk over there, so, and then, once I was up there, I realized, again, when you're in the middle of it, it's, uh, it's very interesting, because each, you can, as you turn around, you see a different viewshed in all directions. There's six of these, as I call them spokes. Now, I'll add that the, I mean, I want to encourage the rest of the board, if we want to do a site walk to Peach Hill to do it, but the viewshed that contains this, where the solar array will be, you won't see all the solar array, unless you kind of start going down that, that path. Um, and I want to add that the, the view is a little bit degraded already. And last, when you were talking about the balancing act, I mean, I say degraded, there's other, uh, things you see, that it's not a pristine view. There are two views that are...
Single-family spruce.
Gorgeous, nothing. But here you see some other structures, a water tower, things that will interrupt your view, so that's something to be considered. The other is, um, I remember Ms. Dexter and I having a conversation the first time that we had a proposal in the historic district here in Hyde Park to put on solar panels on roofs. We were, we looked at each other and said, hmm, okay, so those don't look historic, but do you weigh in the fact that this is going to be better for society, everybody? Fortunately, in the first two instances, because the homes were facing north, they went on the south side of the roof, so we, no one saw it. But after that, we've had, from the other side, they're, they're visible. But I think that that's just something that you trade off, because, you know, so at any rate, it's, it's a good point to make, thank you. Any other comments?
Agreed. Um, otherwise, I, I sort of did a clarification on the bee-friendly pollinator seed mix in my comments, and, and, I mean, most of the other stuff really, um, it really technicalities. When I looked at the landscaping plan, I was glad to see that, I think it's about two-thirds spruce and one-third white pine, so that seems good, because white pine can...
Is that acceptable, yeah, a little higher and then a little wider for the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, because the white pine, it grows fast, and then the lower limbs drop off sometimes, and they don't, there's no screening left, so.
Right, and then you have something below, either...
But this is a good, it's a good mix.
Okay.
Right, and then I had a few technical comments on the decommissioning plan, um, and kind of saying that, you know, based on speaking to Pete and other engineers in the office, that we would base whatever bond or agreement with the town would be based on the actual cost of decommissioning. We saw that there was a salvage value, but that would be, that wouldn't be something the town would weigh in terms of how they would value their agreement, I don't think.
Right, we, we have a sheet that does list, and it's a, it's an engineer's estimate from a New York State licensed professional engineer. I mean, you're talking about 200,000 tons of steel, so it isn't like it's going to completely be valueless on the recyclable.
Of course.
Yeah.
Of course.
At that seller presentation, uh, I was told that no one really knows how long these panels last.
No.
It's estimated that there's a certain time, but it's the, uh, inner, the, the converter...
The inverter.
Inverter, sorry, not converter, inverter. Inverter, sorry, not converter, inverter. Those are the ones that, that need to be replaced periodically.
They do, and we, we plan for that in our financial model, so they'll be replaced somewhere between year 10 and year 15.
Yep, and I was told that some of the original solar panels that were installed in Boston, I believe, are still working.
Oh, they'll still work for years and years and years, I mean...
Just there's a degradation of how much they're really producing.
Correct, you can, you can take them off a commercial installation after 20 or 30 years and bring them to a home situation, and they'll work great, you know, they'll, they'll be great. People will want them. I would want them. You know, but, but they just don't produce at a high enough capacity in New York State to, you know, to fund that, so you expect to swap those out after certain, and we, and we do model that financially, we're pretty certain that we're comfortable with that model.
And that's pretty much what I was told that day by individuals similar to you. Okay, other comments, Ms. Axelsson, Mr. Sotero?
Yeah, in regards to the Peach Hill Park, is your company still active in your application in the town of Poughkeepsie on Underhill?
We've received approval in Poughkeepsie.
You did receive approval?
We did receive approval.
So, I, I, I mean, I think the project you have in Poughkeepsie is in close proximity to this Peach Hill Park anyways, isn't it?
It is, I don't know that it's in the view shed from that side...
Okay.
But it was discussed briefly, and similar to what, you know, we all went and took a look, and everybody said, "Well, you can't make invisible from up above."
Yeah, so...
Yeah, it wasn't determined to be a...
My point is that if you, if they are going to, if they are going to proceed with this Town of Poughkeepsie project, and again, I don't, I don't know this for a fact, but, you know, perhaps the Town of Poughkeepsie project is going to be much more visible and noticeable from Peach Hill Park than this project would, I don't know, I mean, you're going to have to look at it, I guess, but, I don't know.
I wouldn't want the practices of the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board to be echoed in the Town of Hyde Park.
No, 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 but I'm saying in terms of...
Did I say that nicely?
I got it.
And I like John a lot, but I've watched their boards, I've been to them, I know, I know who does the real work.
Okay, moving on then. I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the Highway Superintendent to look at the access drive. If you know the access drive, it's a fairly, it's a fairly steep drive coming off of East Dorsey Lane to get up to the hill. So, in the past, with, you know, the gravel that was out there during heavy, heavy storms, there's been, you know, washouts out onto, you know, out onto the town road, so, I did notice on your plans that, I don't know, maybe about 75 to 100 feet up, there's going to be a diversion swell around the side of the hill with a culvert under the access drive to take that water coming off the road. But, so I think I'm going to talk to the Highway Superintendent about requiring that the access drive be paved at least up until the diversion, diversion swell, so that we don't get, because I believe the slope is like a 10% slope, I think, in that area. So, just to make sure that there's no washout onto the town road, I think it might be best, you know, to pave that section going up to at least where your diversion swell is, and then, on the access road coming down to the, to the diversion swell, just put in some small swales right along the access drive that would end up tying into your diversion swell, so that there's no chance of any, you know, runoff coming down to the road. But, you know, we'll document that, but I'm going to, I'm going to meet with him in the morning.
Okay, great, and if you'd like us to bring our engineer to the next meeting, we're happy to do that, and then you can kind of have a discussion.
Yeah, we can, well, I mean, we can go work it out, that's, that's fine. So, that was really, you know, my, my main concern.
Thank you. Ms. Paul Dero, any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter, any comments? I'm starting from my inner right this time.
I like your revised plan, it seems a lot more complete and has taken care of a lot of the technical things like setbacks and, I just have a question on how, I'm just, I used to work for a solar company.
Oh, okay, great.
And so, I know that the new technology is just pound a stake in the ground, right, and you hang them.
Or screwing, I mean, you can do it a couple of different ways.
Right, right. But you show the rows, you know, when you look here, there's like long rows, and I always thought that those, when you put them in like that, they would, the way you have them, they're either going to be facing east or west, but are they, which way are the panels facing?
Without the plan in front of me, I couldn't tell you, and I apologize, I, I had done a lovely board, and I left it sitting at my house in Plattsburgh, and when I realized it, I was too far along to...
We have, we have the plans.
Okay.
Yeah. Because the rows run north-south?
Okay.
And I'm like, which way are the panels going to be?
Great question. Yeah, primary orientation probably east, if the rows are running north-south, I would expect. And we can give you a slightly more detailed racking layout as soon as, you know, as soon as we get a little bit further on in the process, if you're interested, but currently, yeah, the east facing, so you'll, I, I don't think these are tracker panels, but for whatever reason, I don't know if it's terrain, that's the way that they put it out there.
Yeah, I mean, as you, it's, it's a fairly steep...
If it's got a slope or a...
It's, well, it's a cone almost, like, it's, right, it's got, you're going to be on the north side of a hill, you're going to be on the east side of a hill, you're going to be on the west side of a hill, and a little bit on the south side of a hill.
Yeah.
So, I just, I was looking at that, wondering, especially on the north side of the, of the hill, how that would work.
That's a great question, that I don't actually know the answer to, but I can find out.
And that's just really from my, my own curiosity, I don't really need me to take up anybody's time on that.
Okay.
But as far as view shed, what I find fascinating is that we spend a lot of time here being very conscientious and trying to make sure that we're not allowing ugly things to be built. But I drive down south, where was I? In Fishkill somewhere, and I look across the, there's many places where you can look across the river, and there's this big gigantic white bubble thing, which is a sports dome complex that was built over in Ulster County, I guess like 10 years ago. And I'm like, wow, talk about a pimple, you know, I mean, it's just, it's disgusting. And, and then I look at this, I'm like, well, first of all, it's, it's not bright, it's dark, in the right terrain, it al, it almost looks like water.
Yeah.
So, and the, and just, if anybody wants to, they should Google, what do, what do solar farms look like? And you're going to see some amazing things. China has taken it to a whole new level. They have something that is like, I don't know, 100 square miles, and from space, it looks like a big panda.
Ms. Weiser showed us that picture.
And, and they have competitions now to try to do very creative things, so, you know, in some areas, these are viewed as beautiful and, and great for the planet, and so, anyway.
Sure, well, no problem. You know, if you look back in the old town records from the early days of our country, this debate was raging about silos, and you can read about it in the town. People used to hate silos, they thought they were a blight on the landscape, and now, of course, if we see a lovely silo in a picturesque barn, we think, oh, it's revered, let's not take that down, yeah.
Believe it or not, the same thing happened with windmills in Holland.
There you go.
There are objections to them. We see them now, pictures taken, you know, again, they're monuments, so, you're right, one person's pleasure is another one's pain, so to speak, so, Mr. Oliver?
I have no comments.
Ms. Napoli?
I'll do mine, I'll take his. Does it only come in 12 feet, the panels?
The, the panels are double racked, and so it's a six-foot and a six-foot panel, which is 12 feet, and then they're tilted about 45 degrees, so, yeah, and then, you know, the post is going to provide at least another two feet, so it does come to about 12 feet.
And I know we mentioned this the last time, but, and forgive me, because I don't remember the answer, we had talked about, instead of keeping it mowed all the time, but to plant wildflowers.
Yes.
And then the concept of not only having the wildflowers, but we had spoken with someone who said that they had sheep then on the property to...
There are some places that have suggested using sheep, we haven't yet got to that point, although we have had the, the request for more information about sheep as, as possible mowers. First, let's address pollinators. Cypress Creek has committed to planting pollinators on every site in New York State, so, we're pretty excited, we've got a company, I think we started with, oh, Prairie Restorations in Minnesota, they're a pretty well-known name in pollinators, and so they are designing site-specific mixes of native seeds, so we're, we're doing somewhere, I think around 5% or, it's going to be the wildflower mix, it tends to grow a little bit higher, we often will do that around the edges, especially where it's visible, and, and then there'll be some other kind of flowering native mix that's also incorporated, such as a clover that's a little bit lower growth. So, we aim to mow as infrequently as possible for habitat protection. We do have to keep it down below the panel length, you know?
Obviously.
But usually a couple of times a season, or depending on if there's recommendations, for example, from the DEC or from Fish and Wildlife, which isn't applicable here, but, but, you know, we can mow early season, late season, and just keep it neat, and then the pollinators can come up, and we can, you know, create a self-sustaining kind of habitat.
And then we can take Ms. Dexter's suggestion of a design, and maybe you can make it a watering can.
I suggested Fala.
Oh, Fala, yes, there you go, a watering can.
That's very creative, no problem.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Yeah, if you want to fast-track this in the Hyde Park Planning Board, make it look like a cupola from space. No, I'm looking...
It's cute, it's cute, yeah.
I'm looking forward to this. Been involved in solar for 30, 40 years, when we were building chips for satellites and things like that, so I...
Wow, you're on board then?
Yeah, yeah, really like it. My main concern is just the screening points for the various homes and things that you can see from the area.
Now, on the landscaping plan that we provided, do the, do the screening points look correct, or is there's, can you point out additional areas where that...
They do to me, but I, it's, I looked at...
No go, no go.
No speak, just so we can hear you.
You know, the impression I had, all the comments that I had last time saying, "Put something here, here, and preserve here, here, and there," and they all got addressed.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
What I need to do is go take now the plans and go do another site visit.
Right.
Mr. Baxter, the site owner, gave us blanket permission to go anytime we want, so, what I need to do is go and then try to figure out to make sure, there's just a couple of places, like I said, that I saw, I think they're covered, but I want to make sure I can visualize it.
Okay, great.
That's really it, and again, the, the view from Peach Hill Park, I want to emphasize, it appeared to me that, that at the very top of the hill, looking down, that in leaf-off and leaf-on seasons, meaning spring, summer, late spring, since it's really late this year, summer and fall, you would have an occlusion of the, it would prevent you from seeing most of it because the natural tree is there, and I, I believe that you added some evergreens anyway, because we'd already suggested that at our site visit, but I want to make sure that those are there. Otherwise, you can't stop views from everything if it's something that's important, and again, the town, by passage of this law, the town board is telling us that this is important to the town to promote these kinds of uses, so, I think that has to weigh paramount in our heads.
So, are you still looking for the visual analysis?
Thank you. Just so we're all clear on the same page.
Well, I'd like to do, again, I'd like to have the rest of the board go up there, at least some number of the board members to, I mean, this isn't just me, it needs to be the board, and I think it would be better if we looked from up there to see what I think you're going to see, I think it would be better then.
We have the latest revisions.
It makes sense for the board to ask for something, because you need something in order to evaluate whether it will or will not be significant impact. But I, I was hearing lots of different...
Also important to remember has been noted, this is up a hill, so if you're, if you're on the Salt Point Turnpike, the houses that are there would be looking, I don't think they'd see anything.
That, that was what we believed from the roadway view.
Yeah.
That it would not be visible from those points.
You're really not going to see it from Salt Point Turnpike.
Can't see it from Salt Point Turnpike. There was a house over...
East Dorsey.
East Dorsey, you know, that's all.
And I believe you proposed landscaping, like I said, that would occlude that view, so, or at least provide sufficient screening, so I just have to make sure, but I think a site visit would...
Do you just want the board to do a site visit, or do you want them to do maybe a photo simulation from Peach Hill, just take a photo and plop the panels in or both?
What would you prefer, board?
Do you think it would be better to wait till all the trees have leaves, so you kind of see what you're looking at?
We can, we can simulate leaf-on, leaf-off.
I know you can, that's what you'd rather do, because you don't want to wait till it's fully leafed out.
We don't mind, if you'd like to go ahead and look, and do a site visit, and then decide what you think, that's okay too. I mean, I think we've got enough time before any proposed public hearing. I mean, we, we've got probably three weeks lead time on a visual, two to three weeks comfortably on a visual is what we need, so...
I think with this latest one, I just, a site visit.
That's what I'd like, I'd like to propose a site visit. If we do this quickly, maybe this weekend, we can get back to you, your, your team quickly to request one.
That would be great, okay, thank you.
Again, we don't want to slow anything down, I promise, just want to make sure we're doing it correctly.
We were just saying we can, we can't complete SEACRA until we hear back from OPRHP.
Right, right, that's, that's, we, we're waiting on that, so, Mr. Murphy?
Just that I think the, the view shed, there's mixed industrial, commercial, okay, so, you know, I don't have to go to the top of Peach Hill to see what, what's down there, because...
You can't see Gleason's building, again, it's, it's a very...
Tight, narrow, weird angle there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, so, that's why, I should have, if I'd been thinking, I would have taken pictures with my cellphone, but...
I don't think you'll see it when everything's...
That's all right, I'm not, I'm not concerned with it.
The Luddite here forgets that he has a camera with his cellphone, so...
Happy to see this come along.
Good.
I echo that sentiment, and I agree with many of my colleagues that the site is degraded, and this is going to be a great improvement.
Okay, great.
So, we've kind of covered all our comments, so we're prepared to circulate, declare lead agency tonight? Who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution classifying the action declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review and referring the action to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Salt Point Solar, April 18th, 2018, resolution number 2018-1, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a Type 1 action under SEACRA, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project, and directs its secondary secretary to circulate notice of its intent to all other involved and interested agencies, three, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the General Municipal Law, involved and interested agencies, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, Roosevelt Fire District, Hyde Park Highway Department, Hyde Park Town Board.
And we're adding SHIPPO.
And SHIPPO.
And SHIPPO, second SHIPPO.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, so, we need one, two, three, four, five, six, seven copies of the plans, you can get those to Ms. Whitman, then we can circulate them out. Ms. Whitman, do you want envelopes for these? Do you, do you need, since this is...
They need to bring them to Nina's field envelopes.
Right, since this is quite a different...
They don't have to be in the binders, just put them in a big envelope?
Yeah, because otherwise it's going to be hard to mail it out, I think.
I think the last one, the locusts, theirs came that way also, they put in colored paper between the divisions.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Don't they make boxes?
Yeah, that, that's our typical, but we can do it.
If you, if you want, it's just, we don't have access to something here that would really, we're a small town.
If, if the applicant, if the applicant wants to...
Yeah, we're happy to...
Ship it on the boxes.
We're happy to put the postage on if it's something, I mean, that makes it easier for you.
If you want to put it in the binders and you put the postage on, that's, that's fine.
That's okay too, okay.
Yeah.
We'll just, we'll give you something out, okay, that'll be good.
Whatever's easier for you, oh. And then, I think we need to wait to set the public hearing, at least for a while, because we're not sure when SHIPPO is going to respond, correct?
I mean, you could, you could open it with the understanding that it would be continued, because SEACRA cannot be completed at this time.
I know, what would you prefer us to do? Would you like us to set a public hearing for like a month, or do you want to wait till things are...
Have you submitted though Phase 1B?
We haven't submitted, we have submitted for Phase 1B and haven't received anything back. It shouldn't be very long, but...
SHIPPO's gotten better.
Yeah, we haven't had terrible delays so far, I mean, we've had 17 projects, and they've been pretty speedy on those approvals.
For whatever reason, I remember my first, our first four or five years, we'd sometimes get a response a year after we closed the public hearing, but no, it's too late then, they weren't approved, or whatever.
Right.
So, it's like, but ever since the DEC and SHIPPO have been coordinating better, SHIPPO seems to, by the way, for the audience, this is the State Historic Preservation Office, I should have added that along the way, and also, just for people in the audience, I say this periodically, when we just say the wherethes, the board has already reviewed the resolutions, we're trying to just speed things up.
Okay.
That's all, we read, what you're hearing is the relevant part with the action, so, you can let us know when you, just, it's your preference when you want us to start the public hearing.
Well, why don't, if you'd like, and you're, you're comfortable, you can go ahead and set it, and then we'll just, we'll move through the process, and if we need to continue, we'll just continue.
Do a month, because it's going to count.
Absolutely, a month, so, may I get a motion to set the public hearing for May 16?
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We, our agendas are, we have new applications coming in all the time. Yay, luck on wood, we're busy again.
Yeah, we are busy.
So, we want to make sure that we don't lose sight of these kinds of proposals and keep them going, so...
Okay, well, I really appreciate it, thank you for your nice thorough review.
And as soon as we get a chance to go up to Peach Hill Park, a group of us, then I'll, I'll be in contact with you.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thanks for coming in.
Thanks much.
The next item on the agenda is Bellfield Hotel subdivision. As a reminder, this is a sort of antecedent action to the approval that the board granted for the hotel across from the Coonery Institute. At the time, we did it on one big site, the applicants have proposed subdividing into three lots. One would be the lot for the hotel, the second lot would be for the wastewater treatment facility, the third would be the remainder of the parent parcel. As everyone knows, up on the dais, we had an offline meeting with Ms. Moss present, where we discovered that low and behold, even though we think of minor subdivisions as being anything below five, as it turns out, the way our code is specifically written, unless each lot does have frontage on a public roadway, it automatically becomes a major subdivision, because, and we will be, the applicants will be going to meet with the town board for an open development area. That is the mechanism under New York State that allows development on parcels that do not have public roadway frontage. And again, part of the discussion with the town board, because I've had this too, is they had a question as to whether or not this was anything new, and I said, no, these were always, Mr. Sotero echoed it, these were always planned to be private roads. If the only way you can do this through an ODA process, then the ODA implicitly was, it was subsumed in there in the thoughts of how this would go forward. So, let me turn it over to you guys. Well, oh, Ms. Van Tyle, I'm sorry, this is another application, I forgot. Do you guys want to schedule a site walk for the locusts to see where things are going to be? Would you generally do this?
Yeah.
Yes? Can we get together, I'll email you some dates. Thank you. Now, back to this, please go ahead and proceed, welcome back.
Okay, well, again, Larry Boudreau from the Jayson Companies, thank you very much. Thank you for your, your continued support with this project. I'm going to first start by giving you an update. So, the DEC, I think I told you, but they issued a draft speeds permit last week, so this is the.
You did tell me, congratulations.
Yes, and. From there, it goes into a public review period, 30 days, so we posted that, I believe it's going in this week, so the, the middle of May, towards the end of May, we'll be getting.
And they have to keep that public hearing open a month, I believe?
Yes, 30 days.
I read it in the letter, yeah.
Yep, yep, yep. So, that is really, really good news for us, Tom's very excited, we're, we're making progress here, we're starting to see the end. DOT, we have a take line meeting tomorrow on the induction loops.
What was that?
For PE, permanent easement, so when we set the traffic lights, they have, they need an easement going back into the property to time the lights.
Is this the one that takes the Attorney General six months to review?
Yes, yes.
Yes, um, the, the, the problem is we couldn't get to this point until we were sure on the configuration of the alignment.
And they kept changing the lines, so there was no, you couldn't survey to get where the easement needed to be.
Right, right, so, we're all going in tomorrow, 10:00 AM, to meet with them on that. In the meantime, we did, we're making a lot of progress on their comments, and we hope to submit back to them a week from Friday, as well as DOT. So, these are the second and third round of comments, so we're making a lot of progress, I'm hoping, so that gives us six weeks to the end of May, and I'm hoping we can have a lot done by the end of May.
Just as a follow-up for you guys, I spoke to DOT myself, but I didn't really get anywhere, and so I turned it over to the supervisor, Assemblymember Barrett, and Senate, State Senator Serino, who scheduled a meeting to discuss what, what my particular issue was, the larger intersection repaving improvements.
Yep.
Mainly because the cost associated with that of having to hire personnel while you redirect traffic, et cetera, isn't something that I personally think that the applicant needs to be bearing at the time. This is, again, as I reminded, it was easy to remind them, this is a priority project for the Economic Development Council, as established by the governor, so, given the fact that there's already been state money awarded to this project, and it is a priority for the region. It's also included in Mr. Hicks's, the Deputy County Executive, his presentation on economic development, it's featured prominently, I just saw it in his PowerPoint, so we don't want to have unnecessary delays. In addition, I spoke with Department of Health as to Mr. Hicks, so I'm hoping that made you move forward more quickly.
Okay, yes, it.
They indicated that you had not submitted a complete package at first. Yeah, I hear that all the time, right? They said that you, it was now complete, everything would move forward more quickly.
DOTH?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Their first set of comments were 149, now we're down to 49.
Woo!
And they, they really weren't that bad, they were minor technical stuff, so we're, again, we're going to have those done by, by next week and resubmit it back to them. They have been, been helpful.
Good, but they, they were, they was very nice, they just said, well, at first you didn't do this, and you didn't do this.
Yeah, no, they've, they've shepherded this through and, and.
Well, as I said, Mr. Hicks has contacted them as well.
Right.
I do want to point out as well that part of some, to the audience, some of this delay is because this, the wastewater treatment facility, once it's up and set up for the expandable uses, you'll still need to get, as I understand it, permitting from DOTH and DEC as you get more gallons, but it's getting the initial setup, once you get that, the rest of it should be fairly easy.
Right.
So, I know why you're getting so many technical details, because it's a big, it's a big project.
But you're right, the speeds permit is just for the hotel, so the flow is around 22,000 gallons.
I had to clarify that actually today with the elected officials, they were saying, so how much can this, this produce, and I said, it's not how much that particular unit can produce, it's what's permitted, and they're permitted only, I remember the letters, from DOTH and DEC, so, because they're not going to give you a permit to go anything beyond that.
Right. The comments, I, Deb addressed the EIF comments, because we talked about updating some of the language in there to tie back to the approved plan, which she did. We changed it from a minor to a major subdivision. Tom re-signed everything, and we have the checks for all of that.
Did you hear that, Ms. Whitman? Yes, okay.
The holdup here is me just wrapping up all the comments, no big deal with any of these, they just, they're going to take a little bit of time to get the survey docs all squared away, and again, we're shooting for the end of next week on that as well, so we'll get that back to.
Lot of stuff going on next week at your office, huh?
Yes.
Microphones, microphone, microphone.
Never mind. Offhanded commentary.
Yes.
Engineer to engineer.
But like I was saying, we're, we're, you know, I'm seeing the.
Good.
Yeah.
Very good. So, do, we approved this in January?
Yes.
And you have six months to meet conditions, we can do extensions, as you know, two extensions past that, so let's just make sure we keep our target dates, I know you guys are good at that, but.
Yeah, she's very good at that.
If we're lucky, you'll have met all the conditions before.
Let's hope so.
The, the only thing will be the take line easement.
The what?
The.
The easement they must grant, they must grant to DOT, because DOT will need to go through and do periodic repair.
Take line or permit easement, you know, so, so they're taking a permit easement, and that has to.
DOTT permit.
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, it's interesting, because the DOT wants this additional easement back into the roadway for the, to maintain the induction loops. What they call it, the day that they're, tomorrow they're having this meeting, to determine the perimeter of the rectangle that they need this easement over, and they just call it a take. So, the meeting to decide the, where the line is for the take, they call a take line meeting, which makes it sound like a, like an incidental take.
It sounds like a DEC, yeah, like a, yeah.
But a question, so would that be a delay for you meeting all the conditions, before I can sign the, the plan set? I mean, is this, would, would DOT not give you your work?
They're going to give us a work permit limited to the north, northern drive.
Okay.
So, we have access and we can go.
I don't recall how we worded the.
I know, sometimes we word it that you have to get the permit, other times it's a, a.
Conceptual letter or something.
Yeah, a conceptual approval, or we could even consider maybe providing.
The design will be approved.
Right. Let, let's take a look at the language.
Yeah, I, I think we'll, we're all going to look at the language, and there's going to be a big point made at the meeting tomorrow about the urgency of getting the contact information for the DOT attorney, either from DOT itself or the AG's office, who will be assigned to this. Again, that it's a priority project, we're willing to give them the paperwork for whatever line they decide in a week.
Right.
So, why does it need to sit on someone's desk for six months, and then?
Right.
Then the thought was that if there's any change in title during that six months, they put you back at the bottom of the pile, but we, we've dealt with that by having the construction financing institution agree to subordinate to this easement being offered to DOT, so that's.
Okay.
That's been taken care of, so now, the, there could potentially be an issue depending on the wording of the, your site plan approval, but before we ask for a change in the resolution language from you, we want to see how much we can get agreed on with the DOT, and hopefully, you know, if everyone understands that this is a priority project, and really, the conveyance of an easement over a small area of land.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not rocket science.
Well, yeah, and plus, I mean, they can, they can just, they have to give you authorization to use the modified traffic signals, so I'm assuming that their permit is going to be contingent upon the filing of this easement or something like that, so I mean, it, really, why wouldn't the easement be in their court?
I, I, precisely.
I think they take land faster than six months.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's when you try to give it to them that it gets to be a real problem.
So, the only. Part of the problem is, is that the AG's office, it's the Attorney General's office, that there's a delay, including with the title search, et cetera.
So, I mean, that could be something that you can resolve while you're building stuff, while it just goes through, you know, the process, but.
Well, that's if they agree.
Right, I know, I know, I know.
But the others, let, let's just, we won't, we won't brood about this any longer, but let's just agree that as part of this process, that you're going to, well, both sides will be looking at the language of the original approval resolution. If we need to amend that, you know that the town is eager to see this start, no one more eager, I think, than the seven of us up here, well, maybe some, but, but, anyway, we are eager to see it start, and we don't want to have this, a, a delay go out so far that you can't start doing some site work this year, so there's ways we can adjust this to pulling a billing permit, as opposed to me signing, et cetera.
Does this easement have, does this easement have to be shown on your plat?
Yes.
Once it's there.
Well, we're going to know.
Well, that's why I just, right, okay.
We're going to know where it is tomorrow.
Okay.
And the survey of Steve Alts is going with me, and we'll do it right away.
So, that's going to be shown on the plat that the town's going to sign?
Yes.
And whenever it gets filed, it's really up to the state, the?
They have to approve it.
DOT, okay, fine.
Yeah, we'll deliver it to them, but they need to accept it, so.
Let's just make sure, Victoria, you and Jennifer stay in touch with one another.
Yeah, we'll have to think about the wording.
Yes.
Okay, that sounds good. We're prepared to take action tonight, by the way, to reaffirm SEACR and also accept for sketch, but first, consultants, Ms. Axelson, any comments, further comments?
No.
Sorry. Mr. Sotero?
No.
Ms. Polidoro?
No.
Any comments from the board?
No.
No.
Who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you, Chris.
Resolution reaffirming prior SEACR determination of significance, negative declaration and accepting sketch plan, resolution number 2018-11, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, reaffirms its prior SEACR determination of significance, a negative declaration, finding that the project as proposed is consistent with the approved concept plan, and the final development plan for the subphase 1-A will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. Two, classifies the sketch plan as a major subdivision pursuant to section 96-12B2 of the subdivision law, and three, accepts the sketch plan pursuant to section 96-12C of the subdivision law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So, what are the next steps as you see them, Ms. Van Tyle?
Well, I think we would like to set a public hearing on the subdivision, and.
Do we need to, before we set the public hearing, do we need to have the easement already on the plat? I'm confused about this.
We know that there's going to be an easement, it could be a condition of final for them to show the easement area.
Thank you.
Because we know the general location of it. TAD, of course, is going to want a preliminary and final plat application, so if they do set the hearing tonight, just make sure you get that delivered in the next few days.
We, we would, in this instance, likely accept for both. There's envisioned a certain drop dead dates between the two, but there's not going to be a change here, so, and when do you?
We're already preparing that, right? We're, we're preparing that, we knew that she wanted the preliminary and final.
Thank you.
She already told us that.
I figured.
And then, you know, you need to go to the town board for the ODA.
Yes, yes.
That's what I was going to say, do, do you need anybody from the planning, do you need me to be there when you speak to the town board? If you do, just let me know.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm, I'm, been speaking to Victoria, we're preparing our application for that, and then application to be on a workshop with them, so we'll definitely make sure.
I'm a sixteenth of a mile away, I can always.
Yeah, okay.
Drive up the hill, don't worry, okay.
Thank you.
Then, when would you like us to set the public hearing?
When you want, Larry?
We talked about two weeks.
I'm happy to set it for two weeks, I'm not sure we're going to hear anything from anybody. It's a subdivision on a. I mean, it's just, it's a matter of how, how much time you'll need to, actually, I think two weeks is fine, so May 2nd?
Yeah.
Make a motion to set the public hearing for May 2nd?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye, May 2nd.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, it's a pleasure to work with you guys, and Ms. Van Tyle will be in touch with you about a site walk at the locusts.
Yeah, just give me some dates and a little coverage work, no problem. Hopefully, it will even be spring by the time.
Oh, man.
It is spring, it doesn't feel like it's.
Just ordered the shovel.
We're skipping spring this year, going to go directly into August.
I checked my weather app, and it says snow tomorrow night.
Snow tonight.
I saw it, I'm like, I can't.
Snow tonight into tomorrow, yeah.
You can probably leave.
Night into tomorrow, right?
My boat's in the water, it's going to get snowed.
The next item on the agenda is Empire Auto Solutions, this is the first time the board is reviewing, reviewing this application.
Since we did the sign in previous.
So, we had met in an offline meeting with the site owner, who's here tonight, I see, and at the time, we, he gave us an indication of what he wanted to do, but he wasn't sure about all of it, they still were trying to locate septic, for him to expand a bathroom inside the building, and so we approved the sign, but now they're here tonight to basically just propose some paving. Welcome back, Mr. Berger, it's been a while.
Good evening.
Take it over.
Joseph Berger, Berger Engineering for applicant, Mike Kaufman here, the applicant. What we're proposing on the site, as you've seen before, is basically just to repave the parking lot, which is a crushed gravel with asphalt. I've had discussions with the town engineer in the last couple of days, we also would like to add to the plan, even though it's not here now, to amend the plan to add a gravel ditch, or trench, if, with better description along this, would be the north side, see if this works.
It's on.
It's not too good, here. Okay, the water is draining in a northerly direction to a ditch, which goes underneath Route 9, since all the water is sheet falling here, we would put a gravel trench along the side here, which would act as a collection and infiltration into the ground to take some of the water off, even though gravel and asphalt technically, through calculations, do not increase the runoff, there's a practical matter to everything, and the town engineer and I have discussed that, and I agree, that there's a practical matter, that we would like to leave the project in a better shape than we found it. So, by reducing some of the runoff, and infiltrating into the ground, and providing some treatment of that stormwater runoff through a gravel trench, and we will work out the details with the town engineer, of course, we will be providing some mitigation for the, the paving of the site. Basically, we're leaving the entrance the way it is, we're going to stripe it, which will be better than the gravel where you have non-defined locations. The applicant will also like to put, there's a nice stone wall, as you've all been up there, we'd like to put what he's described as whiskey barrels, which are planters behind the wall with lovely flowers in them, that be seen as our landscaping. And we're here to discuss our application, and hear comments, and work with you.
So, first, we should add, we discussed this a little bit when we were doing the signs, this is actually a kind of dual use on the site, there is both auto sales, and then this will also house livery automobiles, I believe that you maintain. I had to tell you, since I first met you, and you're like Empire, I thought, I've never seen those.
Seeing them everywhere now.
It's just one of those things, as soon as you alerted me, now I see them everywhere.
Yes.
All over. Yeah, so at any rate.
Makes them happy.
Yeah, it's a good sign that you have advertising all over the area. Let me start with the consultants, Mr. Sotero, any comments beyond the drainage?
No, I think, I think Joe pretty much, pretty much summed it up, we'll meet, and, you know, we'll figure out something, we just want to make sure that, because that pipe that goes on, under the road, empties out onto Anderson School Road, which is a town road, and we've got roadside drainage, drainage swell there that accepts the water from that pipe, and we're just trying to make sure we're not going to have any problems on the other, on the other side, so, Joe and I, Joe and I will figure it out.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Ms. Polidoro, any comments?
When the board looked at Mike's used auto, it considered a lot of the spaces that were being used for the sale of vehicles, like sale spaces and not parking spaces per se, which would eliminate the need for the applicant to install landscaping between these rows of spaces. So, you may want the applicant to designate sale spaces versus customer spaces, to see if he's meeting the thresholds.
I believe we've done that, all these are the sale spaces.
In the center, and there's not enough.
Oh, just, just those, one, two, three.
Yeah.
The issue instead would be, let's see if I have.
It's more than 13, I believe, I should have.
This does not have more than 13, the issue is, is if this, if these are, these are sale spaces, I take it here?
Yes.
There's spaces in the rear, and if those, if those are used to park the livery automobiles overnight, they would be parking rather than sales.
So, they would be, okay, okay.
That's why, what I suggested was, if you could add maybe some small fruiting tree, something to soften it, there's not, let me be honest, there's not great soil on this side.
It's like a ledge there.
Oh, it is, it's crushed, it's gravel on top of rock. Okay.
So, we're trying to figure if there's any place you could, rather than, I assume you, you've looked at the parking, total parking, or total vehicle spaces, with the idea there'll be X amount for sales, and X amount for overnight parking from the drivers. Technically, you would need to remove some of those and add in landscaping beds, because those are parking, but if, there's not going to be a way to have them survive, I'm just wondering if there's some area you could find over here to add something again, just to soften it, and nothing that would occlude the view of the vehicles, because you already have the stone wall, but something that might soften it around, that's why, my first thought was, if there's a stone wall here, there might be something decent right along there by the road, but it may be tough there too, I don't know.
Well, that's where they're going to put the whiskey barrels.
Yeah, well, there's just, it usually shows them on the site, and there's not that many, they could put in like a dogwood or two or something.
True, true.
That was my thought, that's all.
Whiskey barrels are more beautiful, six of them.
Actually. Actually, you may. Actually, actually, you may think that. I love those whiskey barrels. They used to be all around Hyde Park in the Chamber of Commerce and they rotted.
No, these are... Really?
Yeah, they will rot over time. I'm just letting you know. As plant material, as the roots dig in, plant material gets pushed out and it wreaks pressure on the whiskey barrel itself. Also, the wood is not high-quality wood that will last for forever, just so you know. But we're not objecting to the whiskey barrels. But again, there's a requirement that when you have so many parking spaces, you're supposed to have so much landscaping for it. If you want to consider asking us to waive that or relax that requirement or waive it, you would just say that... I'm not supposed to be telling you the language that you're supposed... You can ask us to waive the requirement, but you need to justify why we would do so. One thing you might be able to say was that there's no place for plantings because the swell is not appropriate. There, I did it anyway.
That's why we were using the whiskey barrels because it's raised.
Right.
And if they do rot, they will be replaced.
We could put that note on the map, too, that, you know, obviously they should be maintained, but we could...
I said the Chamber of Commerce got, I think, them free and you remember when they were around town?
Oh, I do. I do.
They weren't maintained.
They did last a few years, though.
Yeah.
They did.
But that's usually about it, unless you're taking out some of the plant, the potting mix. Because again, if you leave them out during winter expansion, et cetera, that's part of what degrades.
They probably make new composite ones that aren't even wood anymore.
They do.
Yeah.
They do.
They don't disintegrate that much, just enough to make it unattractive.
Yeah.
So this will be going to county planning and you can expect that county planning will say add a street tree.
Yep.
They generally say that on Route 9, but some to think about.
That is a tough little, that's a tough little section.
It certainly is.
It is.
For the rock wall and the road is...
Okay.
It's tough. It's rock. Literally and figuratively.
On both sides of the, on both sides of the wall?
Well, the walls are right away lines, so we wouldn't be able to do anything on the inside. DOT would definitely...
You don't want to anyway.
And DOT wouldn't let us, even if we applied for it. So...
Well, just take another look and see what, if there's anything you can do.
We will certainly. I will do my best to make it pretty all around. I know everybody says that and they let you down.
Not everybody.
Not everybody.
Not everybody.
We have been pleasantly surprised.
There's an applicant right over there that's done a fantastic job, so...
He's actually just right down the road from me.
Right up the road.
And you're going to be neighbors.
Excellent.
Just that I'd say, he's kind of gone above and beyond the call of duty.
He's kind of setting the bar for you here, yeah.
Yeah.
Exquisite.
And if he knows anything about rock, right, Doc?
And trust me, he's got the same tough site right there. So Ms. Polidoro, any other comments about the two lots being combined?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Let me throw that over to you.
Thanks for the reminder. So this is showing up as two lots. My question was, were you thinking of combining them? If not, you know, we're going to have to discuss a cross-access easement to allow the cars to go on both because only one has the entrance. It's probably easier for you just to combine them at the assessor's office, but it's something for you to talk about with your engineer.
Yeah, we'll consider that and we understand the difference. Providing cross-access wouldn't be too hard either.
No.
No. I mean, it wouldn't be that difficult.
Maybe easier than going to the court.
True. True.
We'll look at that and let you know.
And by the way, one of the reasons why this has never been addressed before was we never had site plan on this while we've been up twelve years. All that ever came in was signage.
Oh, okay.
You stayed.
That's why we couldn't find anything in the record.
You're exactly right. We just kept getting sign proposals, that's all.
We did look.
Yeah. Any comments from the board?
Great sign.
Very tasteful, yes. Any other comments?
No.
Just if you could reconsider some of the landscaping where it's permissible? You know, consider a dogwood or two, just for...
We were thinking about something, I love red buds, but my private nickname for them is dead buds up here. But they age out and they're tough unless they make it their first few seasons. But native dogwoods, we're thinking about dogwoods just because it's native, low maintenance, ease. They, once they're established, they can go into a pretty small space of soil. It's just a matter of if you can find a pocket of soil rather than...
How much soil do you need for a dogwood?
Typically, about four gallons.
Okay. How much vertically here?
They grow out laterally.
Okay, so six inches you could put in?
They grow out laterally.
Do along. I just wanted to, so I could go look and see how much.
Again, having just gone through the nor'easters we did up here and seeing all the destruction of the evergreens because there was so much wet snow and the ground was so wet, we don't want to have something like an evergreen here where it's going to fall over because it's just so shallow. But anything that is deciduous would provide some softening of the site as well as not be a danger if we have the same nor'easters, nor'easters again. You can tell I'm southern. I'm not used to saying that word. So there being other comments from the board or consultants, we have a resolution to type the action referred to county planning because we have to because it's on a state highway. Who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution classifying the action and referring the application to Dutch County Department of Planning and Development. Resolution 2018-17 for Empire Auto Solutions, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type two action under seeker and two directs its secretary to refer the site plan to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239-m of the General Municipal Law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And would you like us to set the public hearing for the second meeting of May to give county planning time to respond, or do you want us to try to go early?
We'll start earlier if we can.
May 2nd?
As possible, you can get back to...
May 2nd acceptable to everybody?
Sure.
Look at you. No, there's two public hearings!
They sometimes do.
They can call and bug them.
Joe can call and bug them.
No, no.
I'll be there tomorrow morning. Hands in hand.
It's, remember Heather does not just review Hyde Park, she reviews other towns as well.
As well as...
And that's what's important to recall. But if you'd like to set the public hearing, we can for May 2nd.
That would be good.
Make a motion to do so?
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, just to burden you. It means for all of us, we're going to have...
We all share the burden.
Yeah, we're all over here for a long time.
We're looking at the agenda for the next two meetings and it's...
Ours will be a short one.
Yeah.
I promise you.
No, no, she's...
How many copies do we need?
One for county planning.
And that's it? I mean, what she's thinking about is how many notices she has to mail out to all the surrounding property owners for all these public hearings. But she might as well go ahead and get it quicker than, sooner than...
We set a few public hearings tonight.
If we can assist, we can, we'll do whatever you need.
Thank you.
Short of... So we'll see in two weeks? Or is that, actually, it's three weeks, isn't it?
It's three weeks.
About three weeks.
Yeah, we have an extra month this, week this month, so. Thanks again and we look forward to processing the application.
Thank you.
And glad you finally came in, by the way, and took our advice to wait to do it the way you did it. Things can be better now this way. Thanks.
Cheers.
Next time on the app... Ah! Dr. Minser! Actually, you guys can go unless you want to stay for DePalma Chicken Coop.
Oh, please?
No, thanks. I'm sure your chicken coop is lovely.
You got an elevation drawing?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
Actually, they do. Yes!
It's got the right vertage, too.
So briefly, Dr. Minser, I believe, has now made his final decision on no more changes, right?
No more changes.
If there are, we're not telling you.
You know what? Don't, because you know they'll detect them?
They'll be caught.
I drive, excuse me, I drive by there every day.
So in essence, I revised the resolution and added two last conditions. One was to remove the concrete sidewalk because you don't need the concrete sidewalk. The asphalt's going to go right up to the entrance. The second is to, that they're going to remove the existing post and rail that's along the western boundary side and they're depicting, they're adding four landscape beds, two in the northwest and the southwest corner and then two on either side of the driveway. And because Dr. Minser had not established which plants he wanted to put in there, I said that the plant materials are acceptable to the zoning administrator. I did in the interim, sent him a list of dwarf, because you don't want to stop the siding areas, dwarf perennials, that he would need to have Adams or some landscaper order, but they're readily available. They're all available to like Monrovia, those easy places to find. And I tried to use colors that I thought would be compatible for you with your red of the building. So that noted. The other changes were things that we already have discussed. Basically, we also, I also added in through here the lighting plan as well as the sign we did not have. We, when we approved the sign, the site plan, we were shown signs, locations for signs. We approved those, but we did not approve the actual signs. As it turns out, there were a couple of things that we need to use our discretionary authority to grant an increase in dimensional sizes, one of which is, I'll call it the veterinary caduceus. It's the veterinary symbol that's above the wall sign. It's 17 inches. We can do that because it's way far back, further back from the road and the symbol...
And it's a 55 mile an hour.
That's exactly right.
Eighty-five.
Well, yeah. And we also, the sign on the, or the symbol, the caduceus on the freestanding sign is 10.07 inches. So we're granting that, too. Don't worry. We can do it several ways for aesthetic merit, but more importantly, it's also your sign is distant enough that we can grant it that way. So I don't know who I gave this to, but if you guys want me to do speed reading, I can and I'll read the resolution, but if somebody wants to read it...
That sounds right. I've got to knock yourself out.
And thank you, Michael. That was, that's quite an undertaking that you did.
Yes, sure.
Especially the 10.07, that was...
Resolution permitting the site planning grant discretionary sign bonuses to increase maximum size of letter symbol or graphic pursuant to town code, section 108-24.2f2. Mr. Venray Clinic, grid number 606602878695, April 18, 2018, resolution 16-44D, whereas, whereas, whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the board makes the following findings to permit a maximum symbol height of 17 inches in the proposed wall sign and 10.07 inches in the freestanding sign as cited below. One, the additional size of the symbol for the wall sign is appropriate given the sign's distance from the road, which is more than 140 feet. Two, the increase in size for the wall sign is appropriate due to the size of the building upon which it is being placed and the speed of the road, which is 55 miles per hour. Three, the additional size of the symbol for the freestanding sign is appropriate given the sign's distance from the road, which is more than 60 feet, and the speed of the road, which is 55 miles per hour. Be it further resolved, the board hereby grants the applicant the requested sign bonus to permit a maximum symbol of 10 inches, 10.07 inches and 17 inches respectively for the posts, freestanding and wall signs. Be it further resolved, the planning board hereby conditionally approves amended site plan authorizes the chair or his or her authorized designated sign the site plan to comply with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of note on sheet one of three from quote 155 watt metal halide light on four inch square, 15 foot high light pole, semicolon, color equal black, parentheses, typical, close parentheses, close quotes, to conform with the fixtures shown on page one of two on the RAB plans for ALED 4T50, acceptable to the planning board engineer and as shown on sheet one in the table labeled parking lot luminaire schedule. Three, revision of sheet one of three to depict gas and electrical utility lines in northwest corner of the site. Four, revision of sheet three of three to remove the three smaller windows in the rear view of the building that are not there. Four, revision of the bulk scale calculation section on sheet three of three to reflect the changes to the area labeled as front entrance and revise the total scale as necessary. Six, revision of sheet three of three changing quote open parentheses, six, close parentheses, four inch exterior recess LED lights, close quote, to quote parentheses, two, close parentheses, four inch exterior recess lights. There was a flipping of that. Seven, revision of sheet one of three to remove the note, quote five foot wide times 40 foot long concrete sidewalk, close quote, and the crosshatching where the concrete sidewalk was proposed, so the area will be paved similarly to the adjacent parking area and driveway. Eight, revision of sheet one of three with a note stating the existing post and rail fence along the western border of the site will be, boundary of the site will be removed and depicting two new small landscape beds to be located in the northwest and southwest corners of the parcel and two additional small landscape beds to be sited to the north and south of proposed entry exit, with plant materials acceptable to the zoning administrator.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Nice job.
Hey, really, I appreciate how much back and forth dialogue we had because you really did help me. When Cynthia and I went through the plans, because you gave us the correct luminaire schedule...
Right.
We were able to see that on Paul's plans, there were a couple of notes that were just incorrect and because Tad has to check it with site plans, if there's wrong errors, then she's going to say there's a problem. So we got all that corrected now.
I told Paul, too. He's going to, he's going to revise the final, 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 final.
I talked to Paul, too. He's going to, he's going to revise the final, 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 final.
Yeah, those are just the ones that I signed. Nobody up here needs to see any of that or anything else. And fortunately, you've been able to continue the work because you're operating under an approved site plan. These are just going to accommodate the changes that you've made along the way.
Plugging along.
Looks great.
When do you think it'll be done?
June 1st.
I'm going to be up there June 1st.
We're shooting for June 1st.
That's coming fast.
Sheet rock's gone up. Sheet rock's been taped already.
Yeah, we can't see the interior. I'm not going to go invade the space.
You can come on in. Yeah, you guys are welcome anytime.
Well, I see, I go by and I see you there, and I kind of honk and wave.
I invite everybody, anytime.
Nice.
They'll put you to work.
No, the site, it's looking good, but you said you have to get your lights ordered? Did you want to order the lights?
Oh, no, we haven't ordered any of the exterior lights yet, so that's...
You can now?
Tomorrow.
You can? What's your turn around the lighting? Do you know?
Two weeks.
Oh, okay. And then landscaping, you're going to...
We got the tree. I thought we were going to open in the winter. I went in the fall. The trees have been sitting there.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's right. What am I saying? I forgot about that. I can see them, so...
Yeah, they're all sitting out front.
Yep, just waiting.
I think the next couple of days, John's going to plant them.
It's time. Even though it feels like winter still, you can, as Chris can tell you, it's time to plant.
Some of them are budding already?
That's good.
Spring is coming.
So, Dr. Minser, I hope that we see you socially or around town, but I don't want to see you in here again.
No, I don't want to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I moved that. I forgot. Did you second it, I think?
Yes.
No, I signed already.
You signed?
It's already gone.
Oh, that's just my paper. Okay.
They took care of the paperwork, though.
Thank you.
Because I said I can still speed read.
I'd still be reading.
Okay.
That was good.
Are you Mr. DePalma?
No, I'm Louis, or Louis Studkowski.
But let's switch these so he can leave. He's been staying the whole time. So, I'm just going to move this up on the agenda. That's the, those are two firemen.
Okay.
I believe you're fireman, right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. DePalma, do you want to just briefly tell us what you're doing? I think we've all read it, but...
Yeah, well, we want to raise chickens. We have 10 chickens. We want to put up a, you have the paper of the coop that we bought. All the measurements are good. Calculations are good. I meet all the animal husbandry guidelines. And we do not have any at all desire to have any other animals besides chickens.
So, as, you know, agriculture, animal husbandry is permitted in all districts, but it does require a site plan, which is why he's having to come through for a site plan. And if you saw, the DEC sent out, I guess, an investigator or an assessor
Yes.
to make sure that he had adequate room for the chickens, he does. We've even got a list of...
Really? Wow.
It's, there's a whole little evaluation checklist in through there.
Right.
Wow.
Because the Cornell Cooperative, they're all concerned about potential contaminants into water streams, wetlands, et cetera. He's got a little bit of a wetland, but it's way off in the corner, way far away from where the chickens are going to be.
Way far away.
And you've already talked to a couple of the neighbors to tell them what you're doing, and they indicated no problems. And if you've looked in the application, they actually have a very impressive list of hens that you're purchasing.
Right.
You're going to have lots of nice colored, lots of nice colored eggs. You're not going to have just standard white ones.
No, there are going to be all kinds of colors.
So, I think it's kind of cool. So, in this case, because there is no escrow, because we're not going to need to have engineering review or attorney, Ms. Whitman, come on, look up, be ready, let me shine your, polish your halo for a moment. Ms. Whitman prepared this resolution with me coming in at the end, so... So, it's not just me who writes them now to try to save applicants money. We've, she's grown. She's graduated. So, who has this resolution?
That'd be me.
Thank you.
April 18, 2018, resolution number 2018-20. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a Type 2 action. Two, sets a public hearing for May the 2nd, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so there is no seeker on this. That's what the Type 2 action means, so there's no environmental impacts. Second, the public hearing we're required to do. And I think Ms. Moss, we haven't had, we've never had a public hearing for something like this, but I think Ms. Moss is just doing it out of abundance of caution to make sure that... We have?
Oh, yeah. Don't you remember up in Statsburg and we've had various neighbors coming out?
Was that for chickens?
Yes.
I thought it was for rabbits. I couldn't remember. The rabbits was here in Town Hall.
The rabbits was right here, and the chickens was up in Statsburg.
Right, okay, that's right, the chickens were.
And we had some goats up in Conley Drive.
That's right, that's right. We'll see. We'll see with the May 2nd meeting. It's likely to be a long meeting. You saw how many public hearings we have.
Yep.
But I prom, oh dear, okay. Don't worry about the minutes for a while. Just worry about getting these notices out, so... But we'll get you through, and I look forward, I, you may have some planning board members wanting to come steal some, I'm just teasing, some eggs sometimes, but I'm just teasing. This will be for your grandkids, I understood when I read the application. Nice. I think this is, this is great.
We have two, and there's one on the way.
Well, you have, you have plenty of property for this. And it's, you're also kind of isolated back there. There's not a, you have houses on the other side of you, but nothing to the rear.
There's only one neighbor that could actually see us, and because of the lock, she really can't see us.
Big rock there.
And who's the neighbor who can see you? Who's the neighbor who can see you?
Virginia.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
I visited Mrs. Pierce's place before, and you can't see anything from her side because of all the rock, the way it's surrounded, so... Anyway, we appreciate you coming in and going through this process. We'll see you in two weeks.
And the public hearings been set?
Yes.
Is that part of the resolution?
Yeah.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you contact me or Ms. Whitman, we can tell you about when to come in if you don't want to wait for the whole evening, unless you were thrilled by all you heard.
No, but it was a learning experience because I've never come this far.
Oh, good.
Right.
A civic learning experience.
I kind of enjoyed it.
Okay, thank you.
We have a good time here.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for Louis and Studkowski. This is basically to install air conditioning and heating. It does happen to be in the historic overlay district on Parker Avenue, but it is not visible from any of the historic sites or the river that give rise to it being in the historic overlay district. So, Ms. Moss has recommended that we waive, and we have a resolution prepared.
Thank you, Ann.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Bird.
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 Sure thing, it's the last one.
Bird. Louis Studkowski, site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, April 18, 2018, resolution number 2018-19. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of a site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Sean Lewis on April 9, 2018, for property located 27 Parker Avenue in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved, be it resolved, that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the file untitled Louis Studkowski.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Last items for the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the March 8 minutes? That would be Diane, Michael, me, and Ann. Make it a motion from one of the four to accept them and approve them?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And also to consider approval of the March 21 minutes of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Everyone was here? Diane?
Second.
Ann? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you make it through your first meeting without wanting to run out and scream and... Any questions to us? Where we're at, we can talk to all of them.